We have our whole team together and it is 5:04. So I would like to welcome everybody to the October 29th City Council meeting, which is the part two of October 20th Council meeting. Thanks to all of you for returning for what is going to be, I'm sure, a very important topic tonight. And so we'll start with a roll call.
Mayor Seaman?
Here.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Mesner?
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Here.
Councilmember Allison is absent. Councilmember Bergel?
Here.
All right. And now that we know everybody is here and that's going to be here, we will move on to our first item tonight, which is A1 Broadway Multimodal Corridor Plan Presentation. So City Engineer Jesse Willer, are you ready to present?
Yes, we are. Brian is going to give a brief introduction, I believe, and then we'll kind of run through our team here.
Thank you, Jesse. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Just want to do the brief of briefest of introductions for the project team tonight and explain a little bit of how we got here. As you'll recall, the Strategic Partnership Grant that got us here, that effort kicked off last year and we've had a robust public process with a lot of public outreach, good stakeholder meetings. Several of those people that were involved in those I see on the meeting tonight and hopefully others are tuning in in other ways, too. We want to thank everybody for that and I really want to give a big thanks to the project team for everything that they've done. Like I said, it's been a very robust effort and your city engineer Jesse Willer has been leading that on the city's end and much more heavily involved than I have. In addition to Jesse tonight, as part of the project team, we have Marcella May, the Executive Director of the Humboldt County Association of Governments, Brad Medham from Caltrans and Todd Trigenza from GHD. So each one of them is going to have a part in the presentation this evening and then all of us will be available for questions at the end and we hope for some of those that I see on here who've been involved in the stakeholder meetings and other public outreach activities to comment as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Yeah, tonight the project team will, we're going to present the current status of the Broadway Multimodal Corridor Plan. Broadway, which is Highway 101 through Eureka, has been studied much in the past. This plan sets out to draw from previous efforts and advance long-term planning for all modes of transportation. Safety continues to be the driving factor for change within the corridor. There have been six bicycle and pedestrian collisions since January, resulting in three fatalities within the study area. Unfortunately, these type of collisions are not uncommon within the corridor. While long-term planning is a critical component for meaningful change in bike and pedestrian safety, near-term solutions are also necessary to address significant safety concern and cannot be ignored. The project team has been working to identify and develop effective near-term projects, which we will talk about tonight. Along with safety, other significant deficiencies are present within the corridor, including a lack of non-motorized transportation facilities, congestion, underutilized transit and poor aesthetics, to name a few. Many of the potential solution for these individual shortcomings can benefit each other and are presented here tonight. There are certainly no easy answers for fixing the Broadway corridor. There will have to be compromise to bring an effective solution into reality. This compromise, however, does not include safety. The hope is that the robust analysis and community engagement completed, including this meeting tonight, will be the foundation for positive change within the corridor for now and for years to come. So next, I'm going to hand it off to Marcella May, the Executive Director of HCOG, to say a few words on HCOG's behalf.
Thank you, Jesse. And while I'm speaking, I was hoping Todd could put up the PowerPoint so that we can...
Sure. Yeah, I am ready to do that. I didn't know if this was the right time to do that.
Well, I'm making an executive decision. So I am Marcella May, Short Term Executive Director for the Humboldt County Association of Governments, known as HCOG. I wanted to begin with an acknowledgement that there have been studies on the Broadway corridor. Those studies are available on the project's website, eureka-broadwaycorridorplan.com with no spaces. They're available for download. And as Brian mentioned, this planning process was funded through the Strategic Partnership Grant program. Partnership is really key. It's not only the government entities that you see on this, on the screen now with the logos. And it's not only including our consultants that have assisted us, but it's also our general public countywide that are important partners in coming up with a project that is the best for the region. Other thing that is different about this is we really wanted to expand the area of possibility. So in past studies, sometimes it was just stuck on the Caltrans right of way. So we did want to take a broader look to find of more solutions. In tonight's presentation, we'll see a potentially transformative project. It will save lives and it will reduce injuries, but it will also require agreements on compromise concessions and teamwork from all that I just mentioned. I'm going to save any comments on potential funding to the Q and A section, but I do want to state that this is a long-term plan. And as pointed out by members of the public, early on in this process, we can't lose sight of short-term solutions that Jesse had mentioned. We don't want this plan to sit on the shelf. We are listening. We have to, we have to implement, we have a duty to implement short-term solutions that will save lives. The HCOG board will consider adopting this plan Thursday, November 19th at 4:00 PM. So hopefully everyone can mark their calendars. And with that, I'll hand this over to Brad Medham from our Caltrans partner.
Marcelo, is that my cue?
The handover part was the key.
You cut out just for a second there and I missed a word or two. So this is Brad Medham. I'm the Deputy District Director for Planning with Caltrans District One here in Eureka. And this project, in my view, has been a partnership from beginning to end. There are, there's some really strong concepts in here, things that, as Marcela said, a broader look at things that Caltrans might not have looked at on our own. So we're appreciative of that, recognizing that there's still a lot of work to be done in order to sort of flesh these out. And the final result may not look exactly like what you'll see tonight, but, but the concepts I think are strong and the short-term information is also very important. We're going to be working with the city to, to try to deal with some of the short-term issues while this is being fleshed out. So with that, I'll turn it back to probably Jesse.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Marcela. All right. So we're going to Todd Trigenza, who's our, who's our project lead with our consultant team tonight. He's going to take over and run us through a presentation and I will, there'll be a few slides that I'll take on as well. So with, for the sake of time, Todd, you're up.
All right. Thank you, Jesse. Madam Mayor, council members, really is a pleasure to be presenting this to you tonight. This study has been ongoing for some time. For, for the sake of brevity, I'll just leave it at that and that we're, we're really happy with the outcome that we've ended up with. It has been a, a, an effort in terms of the technical work and also the, the consensus building and collaboration. And all of it has come together in what we're going to present tonight. So first, just framing the issue, why are we studying at this corridor? Why are we studying this corridor? And this may not really be a question that requires answering to anybody that's watching tonight. But just to reiterate, safety improvements, looking at the collisions that have occurred, both hotspots and systemic issues that the corridor faces and looking to suggest recommendations to improve that. So we want a corridor plan that addresses safety. Multimodal mobility, there's a wonderful trail on the waterfront, but 101 is clearly a barrier to mobility, multimodal mobility, east-west and north-south for that matter, as well as access to transit services and so on. Broadway is a lifeline for the community of Eureka and having it be a barrier to access for those that aren't driving a car is a problem. Travel demand and congestion, we're not anticipating a massive amount of growth in Eureka, but there will be growth over time and there is congestion today. There's also, and maybe not today, today with COVID travel affecting travel patterns a little bit, but there has been congestion. There's a pattern of that. There's also a pattern of corridor rely, lack of reliability. And that's a metric that's a little bit of a nuance from congestion that I can get into in more detail. Access management kind of goes hand in hand with all of the above, making sure that driveways are safe and people can get to and from businesses without causing congestion or safety concerns. We also don't want to forget about economic and community enhancement. So economic resiliency, community resiliency that feeds into our holistic perspective when looking at the corridor, making sure that what we come up with enhances business opportunity rather than put barriers to it. Last but not least, emergency preparedness with the congestion that occurs out there with travel time reliability that occurs oftentimes with crashes where there's bottlenecks. We want to make sure that Broadway becomes a and remains a vital link to the community, the broader community, the county community, if there is a need to either get north or south in an evacuation scenario or whatever the case may be. It's clearly an important regional link. We also want to talk about environmental resiliency as well, and Jesse will touch on that. So I don't want to dwell too long on some of this. I have been told I only have half an hour and we have a lot of slides, but just to emphasize the safety issue, this has been a, a problem historically and I'll get into some of those numbers in a few slides. But some highlights here from the Office of Traffic Safety, Eureka is ranked highest in terms of injury and fatal crash rates for cities of its size. So that's a number we, we reiterate often because it really stresses the magnitude of the issue. Second and third respectively for bicycle and pedestrian crash rates. So clearly on the radar, I believe it's on everyone's radar. It's on your radar. It's on Caltrans radar, the cities and HCOGs and all the stakeholder advocates as well. Travel time and delay, probably less of a heightened concern relative to safety, but it is nonetheless an economic issue. We want to make sure that people aren't and an environmental issue for that matter. We don't, we don't want people idling on the corridor. We have some delay today and there's some numbers on your screen that show how that delay could exacerbate, particularly in the southbound direction, where there is currently more delay and that tends to grow in kind of an exponential factor. So, and then the multimodal is just a high-stress corridor and I can probably leave it at that. It's not a comfortable place to bike or walk along and frankly, it can be difficult to even cross. And so we have some solutions, definitely long-term, but also short-term to help enhance that. Here are a few news clips from recent days. A tragic cyclist fatality at Hawthorne. We've had a few of those in 2020. And on the right, maybe less severe in terms of magnitude, less tragic outcome, but nonetheless, a major problem. We had to overturn big rigs, I think, within the span of one week. It was maybe a month ago. And just generally, there are a lot of crashes along the corridor and those contribute to that lack of corridor reliability. If there were never fender benders, there were never crashes, Eureka corridor may not be that, that bad in terms of congestion, but when those crashes occur, when those fender benders occur, however minor, they, they block up the roadway and they cause issues that can last hours. Honing back in on the safety, we were looking at five years, five-year period, 2014 to 2018. We count eight fatalities along our corridor from Fourth and Fifth Street, essentially the downtown down to Herrick, 10 severe injuries. These, you can see here, the breakdown segment versus intersection. The segments tend to be more problematic. Those do include some intersections as well. So it's a little bit of, of a, I can define that more if anybody has any questions, how we, what we considered intersections versus segments. The bicycle and pedestrian collisions represent only 12% of the total crashes, but they make up two-thirds of all the fatal and severe injuries. So they're clearly an area of emphasis for us. And nearly 50% of the fatal and severe injuries also occur in the dark. So lighting is something we want to address as well. And then since 2020, two bicyclists fatalities, one pedestrian fatality, and I think another pedestrian severe injury. So force four in 2020 so far that are not on the, the books, so to speak. Looking back to 2009, we can see this is fatal and severe crashes for bicyclists and pedestrians. It ebbs and flows. And in some years, we have quite a few more than, than in others. 2020 is certainly up there so far with two months to go. Knock on wood, no more statistics added to that list. But you can see that the rolling average, this orange line shows that we are in a bit of an upswing. And so we want to tackle this headfirst and head-on before it worsens. These were the locations of the 2020 crashes. They clustered together. What's interesting to note here, too, and this speaks to the systemic issues on the corridor, is that we're often asked to look at hotspots. Where do crashes happen? Well, if we only did that, then this segment of Broadway here between Wabash and Vigo wouldn't necessarily have been seen as a pedestrian hotspot, maybe Wabash, but certainly not Hawthorne to Vigo because there hadn't been any. And so just this example perfectly exemplifies the need to look at these corridors, these types of corridors in a systemic fashion, the issues that caused the tragedies in one part of the corridor apply equally to other parts of the corridor. And so we need to treat the corridor as a whole. Okay, so there's a lot of alternatives that we went through and assessed. So I'm going to try to be brief here, being remaining cognizant of my time and your time. But we dug back and so when we first started the study, we looked back at everything essentially that had been considered along this corridor, going back even into the seventies. Just wanted to see what had been thought of, what was out there. We reviewed and eliminated many of those preceding alternatives. Those included a 101 Eureka bypass. Widening of Broadway was seen as infeasible as it would wipe out businesses. And Fairfield couplet was also eliminated. That would have brought highway-type traffic through a residential community. We, we kept assessing some other alternatives that were kind of quickly eliminated. I'll go through those in a slide or two for various reasons, but we ended up coming up with eight that we dug into a little bit deeper. We did some modeling on these and we, we ranked them against a very variety of criteria. We looked at them in a multimodal fashion, which wasn't always the case in the past as well. And we, we did more than this. We, our literature review spanned documents that never quite made it out of draft stages and some that were, but never got implemented, including documents and planning studies by Caltrans. So some of the things we looked at, again, in the interest of time, I'm not going to go through all of them, but these are some of the different bike facilities that we considered, traditional bike lanes, buffered bike lanes, class four bikeways, which are where you introduce a vertical element of separation. That can in fact be a parked car in some cases, but the, in, in our corridor concept, you won't see that on Broadway. So we don't recommend parking on Broadway. But planter dividers, trees, if we can get them, that type of concrete physical barrier between the cyclist and the, the travelway is what we're shooting for. We also look at some shared use paths, some class one facilities. These are off the, the the highway right-of-way entirely, similar to your waterfront trail. And why do we look at all of this? Well, we want to lower the level of traffic stress. So if you look at the speed and volume of traffic on Broadway today, it would be, you'd be hard-pressed to get to a level of traffic stress that attracts folks that aren't really avid enthusiastic confident cyclists. And so that's why we really are pushing for and recommending this class four bikeway as the facility type we believe is appropriate on this corridor because it is able to attract these interested but concerned riders that just don't feel safe enough to be out there, but would like to if they had the chance. These are some overviews of the various alternative alignments we looked at. Well, see, that just happened here. Sorry about that. So these are the eight that we carried forward. The, this waterfront extension or waterfront couplet was quickly eliminated for, due to environmental and right-of-way concerns. We also looked at some road diet scenarios where we removed one lane of traffic on Broadway. And in one case, we actually looked at one where we did a lopsided road diet where we kept two northbound lanes, but kept only one southbound lane and encouraged southbound traffic to go another route. Ultimately, anything that reduced the total available capacity just was not performing well in terms of that congestion and that, that is a very important consideration for, again, because congestion is associated with increased pollution and emissions, also increased crashes. And so we want to try to improve the reliability of the corridor for its users. And so we want to do that without eliminating capacity that's already out there today. And I'll get into how we looked at things as well here. Generally, the framework we applied is called the Smart Mobility Framework. This is something Caltrans developed quite some time ago now, but it remains applicable. It appears in the latest Caltrans Corridor Planning Guidelines. And it's just a way to frame a corridor analysis in a way that considers all the factors that will lead to a good decision-making and good planning, but also improved funding opportunities. Because this is the way state agencies are now evaluating competitive grant applications. So we need to look at the environment. We need to look at the social equity, economic factors, and then those nuts and bolts measures that I've been talking about, the, the crashes, the mobility reliability, and that's congestion. I'm going to probably breeze through this a little bit, but if there's any questions about how we looked at these, these are some examples of, of the ways we looked at how those alternatives could measure up against these. We looked at potential for speed reduction, reduction of conflict points as well. Excuse me. Conflict points are essentially the number of places where a vehicle could crash into another vehicle or a pedestrian or a cyclist. We try to minimize those. We looked at whether, how, to what extent a concept uses available right-of-way, to what extent it avoids sensitive areas. We certainly have some of those in our corridor boundary. And then the others are maybe a little bit more straightforward. Focus groups and business community were a big part of this, too, and we ranked and graded our, our, our alternatives based on community preference. Our outreach was handled pre-COVID with in-person workshops. Post-COVID, we had virtual workshops. We had focus group meetings. We had a couple rounds of meetings. In each burst, we tried to get as many people as we could, acknowledging their busy schedules. We tried to have a couple slots within a few days that we could meet with people. We also sent out a survey to the business community. We got some good feedback from that. We had an interactive web-based tool that was deployed early on to help in that background conditions assessment and understanding what the community's issues were. So what did we get from the stakeholder survey? We, and this was the, the business survey. This was echoed in many ways with our stakeholder focus groups as well, but some highlights on the right are that, you know, in many cases, the local streets provide primary access to businesses. And that was interesting to, to find out and that it was not an overwhelming majority that, that required Broadway as the primary access. Although we certainly know those businesses exist as well. We also found that most customers and employees do not park along Broadway and that's important because one of the things that causes friction on the corridor, both for potential cyclists in the future and vehicles is parked cars. And there was just generally strong support for multimodal improvements, beautification, access modification, not access restriction or removal, but changing the way people access the businesses was well-received. Shifting traffic to Caster was an alternative that people were also open to. So the three alternatives ended up rising to the top in that they performed best against our assessment matrix and echoed what we heard in the community. And these are all good projects and they all have trade-offs, as I think everyone has mentioned. Improve Broadway. So improving the current Broadway alignment from downtown to Herrick. You can see where it scores well is that it uses the available right-of-way. It avoids sensitive areas. It, what had the support of the business community and stakeholder focus group. It could also achieve some speed reduction. We would, we would seek that in, in all of these alternatives to calm traffic back to posted speed limits. However, it doesn't do as well when you get north of Truesdale or so, where the right-of-way pinches down in, in terms of increasing that level of comfort for bicyclists and pedestrians. There just simply isn't enough room from curb to curb to get the facilities that we know we need to make it a comfortable facility for the average citizen. It also doesn't provide any vehicular capacity enhancements, right? So there are no opportunities with this outside, maybe working around the edges of the signal timings that are out there and maybe pushing a few vehicles through more than are going today, coordinating signals that can have an incremental impact, but it doesn't significantly affect the, the congestion and the lack of reliability on the corridor. So Caster couplet goes a little bit beyond, obviously. I mean that both literally and figuratively. It goes west of the current alignment through what's known as the balloon track. And in this case, now we're able to increase the flow of traffic, the smooth flow and reliability of the corridor and greatly enhance the ability to get multimodal improvements between essentially Hawthorne and downtown. So with shifting two full lanes of traffic off of Broadway, that's 24 feet, we're able to add great amenities in terms of transit facilities, transit lanes. I'll get into more of that in a few slides. Bicycle and pedestrian, of course, and beautification. So all the things we really want that our purpose and need statement really compels us to seek are achieved with this couplet alternative. And this is the most constrained part of the corridor in terms of right-of-way. And then the, the best project, the recommended project, and, and I would say in my opinion, the one that best meets the objectives, the purpose and need of our study, and I won't go into those again, is, is adding another couplet on to the, the middle section. And this wraps behind the businesses between the mall and Hawthorne essentially. So where that alternative does not score well, of course, is that we're not using available right-of-way and we're not avoiding sensitive areas. We're going kind of head, head-on into those. So those are some drawbacks and some things that would need to be worked through, but I will demonstrate hopefully in the next few slides why we believe that is long-term, the solution we should be pursuing. So why do we recommend the double couplet? It, it makes more right-of-way available on Broadway. Those 24 feet open up a world of possibilities for us by removing those two 12-foot lanes in the southbound direction. It allows us to provide continuous class four separated bikeways in both directions, which is important. And also some really interesting intersection treatments. You can tighten up curb radiuses and do things without compromising truck movement with a one-way road. You have more latitude to, to make it a shorter crossing between curbs for the pedestrians. Also some fantastic transit opportunities opened up in terms of queue jump where transit, the buses can actually sneak to the front of the, the line if they get to a red light and get a jump on the rest of the traffic that may be platooning. Bus islands to allow loading and on and on. And I'll demonstrate that with some pictures and happy to answer any questions. I am running low on time here. So they also provide some efficiencies, right? So the one-way couplets allow us to optimize signal timings. They allow us to reduce the amount of time you need, for example, for a southbound left turn movement that would lock up the northbound movement. In today's scenario, you get rid of that because you don't have that southbound conflict. And you reduce the conflicts behind vehicles. So here are some illustrations of that concept. I'm going to start at the south end. The south end does not have a new couplet that retains the existing alignment. So some highlights here and I'm going to, I'm going to walk through using the, the picture. We have a, a class one trail proposed essentially from the park. We have a a class one trail proposed essentially from the park and ride lot. Where it could connect nicely to the waterfront trail where that exists today. And it comes along the west side of 101 where there is an easement. Available to us to fit that in along 101 and crosses at the old Kmart entrance. There's a traffic signal there that would provide a safe crossing and then that's where we would start the bidirectional class for facilities. We carry that treatment up towards Truesdale. It includes medians where possible, wherever we can get them in. It includes some protection for the cyclists at the intersections. It also includes actually at Truesdale, the label's kind of covering it. But we recommend class two bike lanes on Truesdale with some parking protection. So these are semi-protected bikeways. Out to again, the trail. So we we really wanted to emphasize the need to connect. To the trail, creating these loop opportunities for people that either want to walk or bike or jog. And full connectivity, leveraging that existing asset of the communities. Oh, here are some more blown up pictures of what some of those treatments may look like. These are very conceptual, of course. And would need to be refined through later design stages. You can see the potential landscape median opportunities along the corridor, flashing beacons. And again, this is just to illustrate the the location, what that might look like. We recommend several of those in our long-term plan, wherever there's an unsignalized location. Almost at every one of those, we want to make sure that people can cross the street safely. Even if they don't have a traffic signal and we we don't want to recommend traffic signals where they're not necessarily needed. Those could also be full hybrid beacon once demand increases. So if we we wouldn't want to put those up to serve. Probably today's demand, a flashing beacon well designed in this area would be a safe and adequate. Crossing, but in some of those we we could also look at a pedestrian hybrid beacon, which is slightly more robust. Moving up essentially from Bay Shore Mall, we keep that class four treatment on the existing five lane configuration. This is, you know, from here down south to Herrick is where we have room to do what we need to do within the Broadway alignment. And then starting around Bay Shore Mall is where the 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 southern or middle couplet starts. And so this is where northbound traffic would be, would remain on the current Broadway alignment and the southbound traffic. Just essentially, there's kind of a triangle piece where businesses currently exist. I think we have an aerial on the next page. Would diverge from the current alignment and bring a. Two lanes of traffic, same as today, no capacity increase in terms of roadway lanes. But it would be more efficient. Brings that back down and to rejoin Broadway somewhere around Bay Shore Mall. There are other alignments we've looked at in this area as well, one that looks a little bit more triangular. Where this couplet would swing out a little bit further rather than between existing buildings. We'd have to address this in a in a higher level of detail feasibility study. Either one of those provides similar benefit. We also have a new trail connection we're recommending at Vigo out to the waterfront. What else? Let's see. We retain full access to the mall. Really enhance the connection to Harris, which is a major movement east into the residential community today. That is a pretty non-traditional configuration. So in in this setup, folks would be traveling southbound down the couplet. Perform a very natural, normal left turn movement and then a through movement up to Harris that cleans that up quite a bit. The bus, the transit improvements are maintained throughout here and then Henderson. Henderson is another big collector distributor from the residential areas. Those folks today encounter the intersection at. Broadway where there's dual lefts, those would instead be through movements across to the new couplet where they could turn left. Again, against fewer conflicting vehicles. Here are some illustrations of the area. I'm going to speed things up here. But I can come back to any of these that I need to. Some highlights are where we thought of some possible treatments where these can diverge and and merge. There's a nice one of these up north as well. So here, this is the northern section. Costa Couplet is shown coming across the balloon track. Of course, and swinging down and rejoining around Del Norte. I'm going to skip right to that. A lot of these benefits are similar. I can elaborate on any of those if you have questions. Here is where we show the merge Broadway and the new Costa Couplet alignment around Del Norte. Nice, you know, curb space would be made available here, a little bit of a triangular position. And again, most of this based on our measurements right now can be done without significant right of way takes. We're not blowing out businesses or buildings, which is really an important consideration of ours. Really strong pedestrian transit connectivity through here. This is where we kind of shift more from highway to entering downtown and so the context changes to more frequent intersections. And again, looking for areas that may be logical east-west connections, so Wabash. Where we have bikeways on that as well and 14th Street. Up at the balloon track, some highlights up here. We do know that folks are currently coming across Sixth. And turning left down Broadway. So what we've done is we've swung that movement down commercial. To a a single lane, small collector over to the one-way couplet southbound. Also provided a trail connection across there again to that waterfront. Waterfront trail, big asset that we want to connect to. I'm trying to think if there's anything else here to highlight that is probably sufficient for now. Here are some examples of some of the concepts I've talked about. This is an act, kind of an accurate sidewalk slash class for bikeway. Some of these contexts are more urban than Eureka, some are more rural. It's anyway, hopefully you can still visualize it on the corridor. Here's a hybrid beacon. This is the 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 one with the full stopping power of a traffic signal pedestrian actuated. This is a flashing beacon. With the width of the roadway, we'd want to look at a pedestrian refuge on any of these that are recommended. And probably even a push button in the middle as well to make sure folks can get across. More pictures of separated bikeways with a landscape barrier. Again, same theme. These are, I think, Portland here. This is a similar example here on the south. Whoops, this is in San Francisco, a two-way couplet or one-way couplet. Similar to what we're recommending, except here there's on-street parking, but you have that counterflow bikeway, that cycle track. Two lanes of traffic in one direction and then we would have the cycle track instead of. Instead of the parked vehicles, we'd have a better than San Francisco bikeway in our plan. Some examples of some bike lanes and how that's implemented as well on a one-way, one-way street. So how, what does this do? Obviously, it lowers the level of traffic stress significantly. So this is how we measure the environment for cyclists and. Indirectly pedestrians as well. So you can see that barrier and this high-stress Broadway corridor. Nobody wants to cross it or or ride along it. And once we implement it, it goes to level of traffic stress one. So that's a very positive outcome for us. Moving to auto movement, we show, I'm going to just do highlights and come back to things. 50% reduction in southbound delay. So what we measured it against was not today's conditions, but our forecasted future conditions. This is a nice illustration here on the right, the southbound PM peak hour, which is today the worst condition. And would really get worsened in the future with added demand on that movement. And then you can see that actually with our concept as modeled, it it gets slightly better than today's condition. Which I take as a big win, moving from your 12 second, 12 minutes average travel time. To six, just under seven minutes. We also look at VMT, VMT today, and we measured this on a boundary basis. So looking at volume times distance essentially. Today, we're looking at about 98,000 daily VMT on the corridor. The no build condition, the future without any improvement would bump that up to 105. And now with our preferred scenario with the couplets, we're adding a little bit of distance. So if we didn't have any multimodal enhancements, our VMT may actually go up a little bit. So we modeled that at 107. Slightly higher than the no build. But then when you take into account the bicycle mode shift and the transit mode shift. We actually reduce again that VMT to actually lower than existing conditions. So very happy with that result as well. Jesse, over to you.
A well-deserved break, Todd.
Thank you.
So I will take a few moments to talk a little bit about contamination, sea level rise, mitigation and adaptation. With any project like this, what we've talked about so far is a lot of traffic and transportation information. And this kind of gets a little bit out, okay, well, we have alternative alignments or concept alternatives. It kind of get off the beaten path and what are those? What do we need to, what are we considering with those? What are the ramifications of of those particular pieces? Next slide, please. So one of the one, the first one is contamination I'll talk about tonight. That particular topic is. Is one that most projects has to address. They have to screen for potential environmental contamination. The balloon track is one site that that alternatives pass over within our project. And it was identified in the Costa Couplet feasibility study by Caltrans to have contamination. It was also known outside of that, but that's one transportation study that documented it. The contamination at that site is there from the historical rail yard activities there. Future project phases of this project moving forward would have to look at. Other parcels, any parcel that would be impacted by the, an alternative would had to be screened for environmental considerations, including contamination. And so that's something that it's 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 definitely a concern this side. I think that's, you know, stopped the ability for that site to move forward in development. And in the past, and that's something that would have to be addressed with this particular project. Currently, the city has an EPA Community Wide Brownfield Assessment Grant. And we'll be looking at many sites along the waterfront in the city, including some of the sites that potential alternatives would crossover from this project. Including the brownfield, excuse me, the balloon track. And we'll determine if those, you know, be looking at those sites to see if they're eligible for site assessments. And then in the future for funding for cleanup. And so the the balloon track will be one of those parcels as well as many others in the city. Another topic that needs to be addressed when you're looking at a project that's right along the coast, along our waterfront like this is is sea level rise. We analyzed areas that appeared vulnerable. And there were, it appeared vulnerable and had been identified in previous studies. Here we see a portion of the project near the Palco Marsh. This is a particular area that is vulnerable to sea level rise compared to the other areas where there's a. A large built-out section of city where the alignment diverges away from the coastline. Those areas are, you know, is naturally less vulnerable to sea level rise. We ran scenarios with different. Recurrence intervals to 10, 25, 100-year events. And looked at what inundation levels look like over these particular areas to see, you know, what might be impacts. For future sea level rise for proposed project and also for the existing area around there. Around those areas. We also looked at with that knowledge in mind of what sea level rise would look like with the project. We started to identify, you know, how how might we be able to adapt to sea level rise in the future? And knowing that we have other studies that have gone on in the area of the waterfront here with our treatment plant and our. Other utilities and and facilities and properties along the waterfront, we started to see some opportunities. For adaptation for some of those other facilities that this project might actually help. When we're looking at like the south couplet here where you have an alternative that builds a potentially a fill prism. Along the edge of the existing parcels on the east side of Palco Marsh or Mauer Marsh. Where we could actually have a a large sewer transmission main moved back there away from the coast significantly away from the coast. Which would certainly help us as a adaptation strategy for that particular piece of infrastructure. Currently, it parallels the railroad tracks that are out and very close to the shoreline and have a low elevation. So those are some, those are some of the type of things that we're looking at as far as the potential for a sea level rise adaptation strategy. Where this project kind of help other, other pieces. Of the other parts of this city's infrastructure to be protected. As well as create a buffer for some of the parcels along this area at the marsh as far as being able to set the elevation, the burn. And be able to provide a level of protection to those businesses and the public facilities like the highway along through this area. Along with this, you can easily see how a mitigation plan could come together in the area around the Palco Marsh. There are other restoration areas that have been developed in the past that were associated with either the mall or other activities in the area. Those areas have the potential to be connected and and create a larger, what we've been kind of calling a Palco Mars expansion area. Where you could open those up, create hydraulic connectivity, create a better fully. Connected habitat area as well as removing large areas of fill. That exist on city-owned parcels back there that are underutilized currently. So there's certainly with a project like this, we know that there, if there are impacts, they're going to have to be mitigated for. They're going to have to be mitigated for at a, at a rather, at a ratio of some sort. And so we have a strategy in place in order to, what we think is a good project would. Create a lot of benefit for the city and for the habitat in that area that would work as a mitigation project for any of those potential impacts. For example, in this area. That particular project is is a rather large project, but it also has the potential. It's one of the few areas within the city where you really could see a good potential for a larger project with good. Public access as well as, you know, expansion of habitat area connectivity. So that's a good potential mitigation project there. That would also have to hold true on the balloon track area. If there was impacts to wetlands in that area, you can see potential mitigation areas there. For the, any of the wetland impacts in that partial site being close at hand. Or potentially in other areas, other mitigation areas that might be more appropriate for that type of mitigation and create better habitat. So Todd, I'll turn it back to you.
Thanks, Jesse. Okay, and then the next few slides should go a lot quicker and I look forward to taking all your questions. As, as, as you may have them after this. But this is kind of where it all comes together, the project cost and the benefits. And we recognize this certainly will not be a locally funded project. This is going to be an expensive piece of infrastructure. Or pieces of infrastructure. If we are considering the other infrastructure elements Jesse just mentioned. But the benefits are are strong too. So let's start with the costs. These are preliminary. Obviously, there's a lot of uncertainty. So mitigation costs, for example, in that middle couplet unclear. But we put our best engineering or I'm, I'm not an engineer, I'm a planner. But I I consulted with our engineers and we we did our best to look at what those mitigation costs have been historically. We talked with folks that have experience with projects in the area. And so we we feel pretty comfortable with that number from a, of a, from a planning perspective, which is where we're at right now. Similarly, in the north area, there is an extra cost associated, not only with constructing that that couplet. But also with the 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 contamination and cleanup of the balloon track. And so we looked at past studies and did our best to update those estimates. So that we could be confident that our number here is is good enough to move forward with, to start seeking further implementation of this plan. So we're looking at nearly 60 million on the northern section. That includes all the soft costs associated with the project too. So it's not just construction. Full delivery, same with the middle. The middle is higher at nearly 80 million. And then the southern section is nearly 20 million. So all in all, we're at $155 million for the corridor plan. So how, how do our benefits stack up against this? Well, they stack up well. And so what we do is we look at life cycle costs and we look at life cycle benefits. And the life cycle is typically defined in most of the funding applications as a 20-year. And the life cycle is typically defined in most of the funding applications as a 20 year cycle. So we have some air quality and emissions benefits for all the reasons I described before, reduction in VMT, the mode shift. The bigot, well, yes, the biggest benefit is the collision reduction. So we're able to turn, you know, the unfortunate crash patterns and history of the corridor. And by mitigating them with projects that have a demonstrated ability to reduce those, associate a monetized benefit with those, those reductions in the future. So based on essentially how many lives and crashes we can save over the next 20 years with this project, we've come up with nearly just over a quarter million. I'm, I'm sorry, $260 million benefit over 20 years. So that's huge. Bicycle mode shift is another big benefit, $120 million. And that includes some health benefits, includes VMT reduction. And I have backups for all of these if anybody has any questions. And then the delay reduction and buffer time reduction. I haven't even scratched the surface on buffer time. I can go there if anybody has any questions. It's a measure of the reliability of the corridor. So essentially it's how much longer you plan to your trip to travel because you know that you might hit congestion. So it's not just the actual average delay, which is that $56 million, but it's that extra time you give yourself to get to your destination because you know that you could get stuck behind a fender bender. So that can be monetized as well. All in all, nearly $510 million of benefit. So that stacks up well competitively. We are shooting for a return on investment, right? So anything over one is good. That demonstrates a positive return on the dollars spent. We generated a benefit cost ultimately of 3.28. One thing we didn't talk about, and it may be in my backup slides in the back, but we also ran an economic analysis, economic impact analysis of how many jobs may be expected here during the construction. There's a benefit associated with that indirect and direct jobs and expenditures in the local economy. Things like people lodging, people buying lunches, buying dinner, buying groceries, whatever the case may be. There, there are other benefits there that we don't quite wrap up into the benefit cost measure, but that are available if anybody has any questions about those. So all in all, for a project of this cost, you know, having a positive benefit cost is, is a great sign and we're happy with that outcome. That's for the long-term project. Now, the short-term need to improve this corridor is not lost on us. Here are some examples I want to present about projects that we've moved forward. And really it's, I need to commend the, the city HCOG and Caltrans for that movement forward, as well as the stakeholders that lent their support to that effort. Caltrans was able to prepare a grant. Well, it's not really a grant, it's an application for a competitive pot of shop funds, state highway and operational, essentially money that's been set aside for complete streets improvements. And so we took the majority of the components of our southern section from Truesdale down to Herrick and worked with Caltrans, Caltrans did the bulk of the work here. And they prepared an application seeking $13 million to implement that project. So we should hear back on that sometime in November and we're hoping for a positive outcome on that. There've also been discussions ongoing about how we can enhance the other projects that Caltrans is undertaking along the corridor. Caltrans has been doing ADA enhancements, some sidewalk gap fills and development has also played a part in that, in reconstructing sidewalks and cleaning things up up to standards. So in our report, we'll have a, a list of projects that could be implemented. Now, some of these may need to be thrown away for the ultimate project to be built whenever that project is able to move forward. We recognize that's going to take some time, time measured in years. So the, these in some cases may not last the length, the, the length, the lifespan of the ultimate project, but they, they still provide an immediate benefit and they're low enough cost that they're worth that return on investment again. That ROI benefit cost is what drives these investment decisions. Well, the map here shows a few pedestrian crossing locations that we've been talking about. These could be funded through a variety of Caltrans sources. And these are some logical locations that are a sufficient distance between signalized intersections that exist today with destinations on each side that we think they warrant evaluation for near-term implementation. Also looking at the, the minor street crossings. So Hawthorne, for example, recently signaledized by, I believe it has bike lanes on the segment, but they drop off by the time you get to Broadway. Looking at carrying those bike lanes up to the stop bar and then carrying those cyclists across Broadway to their destinations west, be that the waterfront trail or a business in between. These are all examples. I'm happy to answer any more questions on, on any of these strategies that may be employed. But those, those discussions are ongoing and have been ongoing frankly, since the project started. But it's something we, we are acutely aware of, a need to do. We don't want the long-term project to overshadow the need to make improvements today and vice versa. The opposite is also true. So next steps, okay, we're going to finalize our study. So we've finished the technical work and we're wrapping it up into a draft report. It should be posted in the next couple of weeks or so, I'd imagine. We, we want to start working on implementing that near-term action plan. That's something that's a little bit beyond the actual scope of this study, but something that's kind of come alongside as the momentum has grown and the partnerships have grown, working together among agencies and stakeholders. So there is positive movement in that direction as well. And then HCOG board meeting, November 19th, we'll be able to present probably a similar presentation, but also the, the draft plan will be in hand, will be seeking adoption or approval of the plan at that point. And then late fall, early winter, receive an update on that shop project. We remain hopeful. It is a competitive program. I know many Caltrans districts and agencies working with them that are seeking that complete street funding, but it's nice to have a project in the north, north state. So I think we have a good compelling argument there. In terms of the actual project, the long-term project, that starts down the Caltrans project development scenario. And that starts with the PID project initiation document, which takes a lot of the work we've already done, repackages it in a new format into a PSR project study report. We'd want to begin to initiate the environmental phase, looking at right of way. Ultimately, what our hope was, what we struck out to do when we initiated this study was seek to put together a solutions for congested corridor grant. And that is a grant that it is appropriate to have a project of this scale. These are the types of projects, these are kind of visionary projects that have, you know, striking benefits, but they cost a lot of money and it is competitive. The next cycle applications will probably be due around summer 2022. We're reviewing, you know, we're keeping all that smart mobility framework, the way we analyzed it was all done in an effort to essentially translate this planning effort into a grant application when the time is right. So that window is small with all the work that needs to be done, but we're hopeful that with the momentum we've gained throughout this process, we can get there. I don't know if anyone else on the project team has anything more to say about this, but with that, thank you for listening. Appreciate your time.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? It looks like Councilmember Castellano will go first.
Just to quit, first, thank you for all your work on this. I'm curious, you know, I have thoughts on it, but in terms of questions. You know, it seems like there's kind of three different parts, the north, the middle and the south. Like how possible is it to break out those separate parts in terms of funding, implementation? You know, would it be, you know, this is speculative, but would it be like kind of practical to kind of look at them separately in some regards?
Yeah, that is a good, yes, I guess the answer, short answer is yes. Breaking out this particular, the project, it's those three pieces you identified. And there's a south, a middle and a north section. They all could be broken out into separate projects. There, there are certainly some intricacies to that, but it is, it is possible and there could be some benefits to doing that. Like we did, like was done by trying to put in an application for the 2020 shop complete streets. That section down there could kind of operate standalone. We wouldn't see facilities, bike and ped facilities extended throughout the rest of the corridor, but for that particular section down there, it could work. And, and other sections as well could be broken out and, and done in a phased approach. So does that answer your question, Leslie?
All right. And I think I said, did Councilmember Royal, did your hand go up? Okay.
I think I'm gonna ask one or two and then share the floor. I have several. Thank you also, yes, for the great presentation and the work on this. And I'm appreciative that we were able to get this funding to really reexamine the concerns around Broadway. So I understand that with the proposed alternative that includes the, the couplet in, you know, branching off of Broadway into locations, that that would go through some, along some city streets. So we have some say there. And then there's also some property acquisition that has to happen. But when it comes to the Broadway corridor, the Caltrans portion of it, what is our, what is our level of authority? I wanted to start there because it, it feels like we're a partner for consulting, but that we don't necessarily have the say about what happens there. Could, could Caltrans staff clarify that a little bit more?
So I would, I'll, I'll start, but then just briefly and say, it is certainly, you know, Caltrans right of way, that Broadway is Caltrans right of way. It's, we don't have, you know, authority over them. I would say that they've been more than willing to partner and hear our concerns through this process. And on, in some cases on, in some safety concerns in the past. But so with that though, I would like to hand it off to Brad if he's still on the call, though I don't see. Oh yes, Brad, are you still available on the call?
I may have stepped away for a minute.
And then second would be Jesse, Jesse Robertson. Are you still on the call?
And Marcel is here. I can say a few things too.
I, I am here and I did get a text message from Brad saying he was getting disconnected or had, having some intermittent connectivity issues, but, but you know, we, you know, I think some, some of the alternatives that we've looked at would, you know, have definitely have definitely been made possible through this partnership effort. The, the Costa Street couplet alternative was, was something that Caltrans looked at initially. We do have either a policy or maybe there's a law in place that prohibits us from acquiring brownfield sites or hazardous waste contaminated sites. So as we, unless we have a, a means to clean that up, we're unable to, to purchase that for development. And so that would be something that, you know, the, the county could, you know, if they had a grant to clean up, they could, they could remediate the site, they could, you know, potentially build with grant funding, the, the, the new alignment. And they could also dedicate it to Caltrans for our, for our long-term maintenance and, and, and ownership. So, so we would take on the, the long-term liability for that once it was built. And the middle, the middle couplet, you know, that would probably assumably be a similar concept where we would acquire the, the right of way once it was, was developed. But at this point, you know, we just, we just own and maintain the existing Broadway corridor. And then we manage that according to state standards. So Marcel, is there something you'd like to add?
Yes, my personal computer finally uploaded Windows 10. I have a visual. I just want to go back to the, the discussion of partnership. So partnership is going to be required through, not just again, through government agencies, but through our transportation partners. This year, the C, the California Transportation Commission that oversees the funding statewide, added language to the shop guidelines for Caltrans that they're required to partner with cities, with regional agencies and with transportation stakeholders. So anything further, any development further in the future will require us to all work together. Kind of breaking down the silos, if you think of it that way.
And I see Brad joined in. I don't know, Brad, is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
I apologize for my connection dropping.
I don't think, we can't, we don't have a good audio.
I agree with Marcela's saying, you know, we're, we're partners in this effort and
Sorry, Brad, we really can't hear you very well, but I, I heard that you were underscoring the partnership element. So that is, that is good to hear.
Did that answer your question, Natalie?
It did. And there's a reason I asked that. I mean, it, it's, it's not always clear to me what the relationship is or needs to be. Obviously we want to have a good working relationship and come to mutual agreement. But in this particular proposal, I mean, there's, there's sort of an integral piece of the city needing to be a part of some critical elements. And so I wanted to understand that a bit more, but if it is entirely within Caltrans right of way that a project is being proposed, you know, I know in the past there, there's been a different kind of mode of partnership. Anyway, I'll save my comments for later. I, I did just want to ask one more. You know, I understand that the, the project that was, the component of the project that was the closest to the grant funding available for the shop was an appealing fit. And I'm appreciative that we submitted for that and of Caltrans staff's support in submitting that. But I'm, I'm wondering, you know, how, how can we apply available funds to the section that is the most dangerous, that near-term action plan? I'm concerned about the area where people are dying. And I, I'm wondering if folks could weigh in on that.
There you go. Sorry, it took me a second to get that needed. I will respond to that one. With Brad's audio, I think that probably the best solution here. So I think what you're getting at is like short-term safety solutions to, that would like address some of the areas where we've seen these fatalities and severe injuries happen over and over again. And that's where some of the things we've talked about with part, with taught, with meeting with and talking with Caltrans and trying to have an understanding between the city and Caltrans as to what some of those solutions could be. And Todd in his presentation had shown some of those at-grade pedestrian crossings, the mid-brock crossings. Well, the process has been engaging with Caltrans and having a discussion about where do we have opportunities to provide safe crossing for pedestrians and, and you know, for bikes across Broadway. And they've been very receptive to looking at those areas and, and, and working with us on solutions. And my understanding is that there is a potential funding that they can harness if, if a particular improvement kind of meets the cut that would allow it to be implemented in a rather short-term schedule. And I don't know, I, I can't say exactly what that schedule is because I don't understand their internal process. And I'm sure there, it would be difficult to say at this point anyway. But the, in, the intent is to be able to get some of these process, projects moved ahead rapidly. And we will, I know that as far as, you know, our side, we will continue to make sure that we are pushing to get those implemented. And I've had, we've had nothing, but you know, they've certainly been there hand in hand with us on trying to move these ahead.
And just on that same note, is there any one else, Caltrans perhaps, who would be able to speak to the commitment to that? I, I'm very concerned, I'm appreciative that you've expanded the scope to include that because I think it's imperative, but I'm also very concerned that regardless But I'm also very concerned that regardless of what we decide long-term, that we have some commitments around immediate action for these places where that's so dangerous.
And so Caltrans, I don't know if Brad's audio is working, maybe Jesse, if you're available to speak to that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a crack at it. I would like to just acknowledge that, you know, a lot of these visuals that Todd has presented tonight, a lot of those have been developed very recently. I haven't seen most of those. And I didn't actually contribute a whole lot to the, the application for shop funds on the southern portion of the, of the, of the corridor. But, you know, some of these are happening kind of on separate tracks. And I think they're, there's, they're continuing to evolve. You know, what, what sources of funding? I haven't been involved in those types of discussions. I, I certainly think there, you know, there are, are some possibilities. You know, I, I don't think that I'm probably the best person to, to speak to those. I, I haven't, you know, I haven't had time to look into some of those types of questions. So I don't know if Brad might be better able to respond to that or Marcela. But yeah, I basically, I, I don't have a good answer for you.
Yeah, I'll just add, HCOG is hoping to partner with Caltrans. Maybe a 40, 60 or 50, 50 in terms of the long-term, most of, of the funding that comes through HCOG is for future years. You know, three or four years out. We don't have any money that comes through our organization goes out to our jurisdictions pretty quickly. So we're not sitting on any funding. So I do hope that Caltrans will step up with the short-term solutions. In terms of the long terms, I am hoping for partnerships.
Thank you for taking a crack at that. I know you weren't really prepared to be.
Am I able to be heard now?
And just, yeah, you're kind of breaking in and out, but I think we, we got a solid, could you hear me now? So go ahead.
And, and I appreciate the.
I don't think it's gonna work.
Recognizing that, you know, we have a traffic safety.
Do you want to try turning your video off? Completely and then try talking and maybe that'll help.
Now, let's see if my bandwidth is better if I have no video.
A little better, yeah.
A little better? So I was just saying that Jesse's been working in close partnership with our traffic safety. To come up with those. And that's really where they made the determination about what's going on, but we, we share your concern as hard as we can.
Thank you, Brad. And council member Royal, you said you were gonna, to shares. So can we move on to council?
I'll share the area. Yes, thank you.
We'll come back to you. I know both council member Brugel and Messner have something to say. So I'm going to go with Brugel first because she just had her hand up.
Thank you. And thank you for this report. It's very thorough in the long term. My concerns are not about the long term. My concerns are about people dying today, not today. I'm sorry, it was two days ago, right? So, um, and I too, I, you know, I like this project that you've brought forward. I do have a lot of concerns about going through behind the marsh, through the wetlands and those types of things. But I want to talk about what's happening now and what we can do now. You know, five and six years down the line, 10 years, 20 years down the line, that's not going to keep people safe today.
Is this a question?
Yes. So my question is, what is? So one of the problems is lighting. It's very dark down there. What can we do to create more lighting in that area? And also I would love to see a specific timeline on how we can move some of these improvements forward. I understand that there's funding involved, but I really feel like people's lives are important and this is not going to just go away. In fact, chances are good it could be more. So I'm wondering, what can we do to get a timeline? Lighting and some mitigation, starting at a low level and then moving from there. And I don't know who would be the best person to ask, maybe Brad or Jesse?
I'll take a shot at my audio works.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, um, thank you for the question. I, I totally understand why you're concerned about that. I'm going to recommend that you give us a couple of your council meetings and then we'll come back in. I'll bring David Morgan in, who's our, our safety engineer. And we'll address the short-term issues directly because I think, I think that we can probably separate those from the issue of the corridor. Something has to happen now. So give us a couple of weeks and, and we'll come back in and speak to the council.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Brad. I appreciate that. Thank you. Do you have anything to add to that, Jesse?
Sorry, I was going to add about the lighting, the question on the lighting. I think I can feel that all these, all the crossings, the pedestrian clock crossings that we discussed in the presentation. Those would all have a street light on either side of them. So that exists, these new proposed crossings would be well-lit. You know, throughout the, throughout the day and night.
I hear you say that and I, I get that, but that's long-term and I'm talking about short-term. So it sounds like that Brad's going to bring something forward in a few weeks to council and that'll be a great presentation.
Yeah. And I was speaking to the, the short, you know, there's the long-term plan. And then there's like these short-term fixes that are kind of, we're trying to fast-track. And those short-term fixes would have lighting at those particular crossings. That's what I was referencing.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Council member Messner first. She's been waiting a long time and then we'll get to you lastly.
Thank you. Thank you all for bringing this forward. And it's good that we are talking about partnership. And some of the questions I had, I actually had a long list. And so some of them have already been answered and asked by other council members. But one of the things that I would like to know in regard to partnerships is the, are the stakeholders involved committed to completion of a project like this? And how might the coastal commission be involved? Because there's definitely, and certainly some areas that they would need to be involved. And have they been so far? And, and is there any positive movement with them? That's a number of questions, sorry.
So I'll take the coastal commission first. We did have a, we had a, a team meeting where we met, I guess as staff, Eureka staff met with the coastal commission and we discussed the project and concept as well, you know, as far as the alternatives that you've seen here today, those concepts. Just to, first of all, to introduce them to the project and make sure that they had a good understanding what the project was. And then to try to see if we get any feedback on the particular concepts. And I think, you know, they, they received the information. We didn't get a lot of, we did not receive a lot of pushback. We also didn't receive a lot of additional feedback. It was more along the lines of, well, there, the additional, you know, they would need to review additional information in the future, but they're aware of the project and we've had discussions with them. They've asked some questions about the project. And we just wanted to make sure they were aware of it and, you know, understood kind of the, the justification for the project. As far as, you know, starting with the safety concern that, you know, is it the, the top priority for this project? And, you know, I know that really doesn't have, that does come into play when you think of like the safety corridor and how that project was able to move ahead. And so that, that was the kind of the discussion we had there. Your other question, maybe you could, could I ask a clarifier on the moving ahead with the stakeholders? I'm just trying to understand what exactly, what you were thinking there.
Yeah, like what? There are a number of stakeholders involved and are the stakeholders who are going to be required to be involved in a project like this? Are they committed to following through with this? I, I, I just would be concerned that in, you know, three or four years, we, we have to start all over because you know, one of the stakeholders pulls out or, you know, something like that. So I just am wondering what the commitment level is with those who would have to be involved in this type of project.
Yeah. So if you're talking about stakeholders as HCOG, Caltrans, those are our partners in the, in this, then I definitely know that I will let Marcela speak on half of HCOG and Brad can speak on the half of Caltrans. If a larger project was to move ahead, though, we would enter into, there would be a cooperative agreement potentially entered into if we're talking about a, a project. And that would kind of identify roles and responsibilities. So there would be an agreement, I think, that might go into place for the long-term projects that would kind of identify, you know, roles and responsibilities from all the different partners. But Marcela, you have, you want to add in something on, on HCOG's behalf?
Yes. I think the most important thing to say is that HCOG staff is not the decision maker. So we have eight board members that will take a look at this and make their decision next month.
But once they make that decision, then they, that decision is to be committed through the end. I'm just clarifying that.
Yeah. So, um, one of the, Todd mentioned the solutions for congested corridor program. So that's a very competitive process. And the plan will hit all of their requirements for that. So adoption of the plan will make us eligible for, for that funding. If the board decides that they want to do something different, we would incorporate that in the, in the final document. That grant opportunity only funds construction. So HCOG would also have to make decisions to fund all of the pre-construction components in partnership with Caltrans. I have to, I should have said that first. So we hope that they will be contributing for that as well. But I, I just cannot speak on behalf of the board. What their final decision is going to be. So that will be a good discussion next month and maybe December.
Did you have anything to add to that, Brad?
Um, yeah, I, I do. I, I'm in something the same position as Marcel is. Jesse's been trying really hard to corral me and our management team at the district level. But we have not had that meeting yet. But, you know, from a, we've involved the right staff people in this project all along. So I, I'm foreseeing strong support from management. That being said, you know, the issues are sometimes, you know, statewide funding issues. We, we expect it to be difficult to get transportation dollars in the foreseeable future, simply because people aren't burning a lot of the gas right now. So there are all those, you know, it, it, asking us to be committed forever is really tough, to be quite honest with you. But from, from my level, we're strongly supportive of the project and I'll be making that recommendation to our exec staff when Jesse gets before that. So.
Okay. Thank you. I just know that this has been in discussion for, you know, well over 10 years. So I, you know, and if we're talking another 10 years, I just, there's so many safety concerns. And like some of the other council members mentioned, we definitely need to mitigate some of those early on, earlier than later. But a long-term solution would be very helpful. So, thank you.
And council member Castellano.
Um, I was just going to ask if, prior to the presentation by Caltrans in a couple of weeks, if the Coalition for Responsible Transportation could be part of those meetings to develop some of the safety protocol? Or it could be on board with some of that preparation?
Yeah, I think that would be, that'd be reasonable. We've, we met with them today, actually earlier today and discussed some of the, the options that were presented today. And, and received some of their feedback. What I told them is what I expect to have happened, hopefully. I mean, that's, I'm going to try to will that forward, which is that we have a suite of near-term solutions that we're trying to push out now, but that doesn't mean that that's, that's it. We need to continue to look for other, other solutions. And certainly heard some suggestions from Colin Fiss there with CRTP. And I think they will continue to, to use them as sounding board for those, for, for those designs in the corridor.
I have a question following up on council member Messner's about the coastal commission. With such a tepid response and such a powerful body and what they can allow us to do. Is there any way we could get them to? We can talk with them to get a more agreeable response so that we can anticipate being able to move forward more effectively?
So if I can chime in, Mayor, Jesse was being justifiably guarded, I think, with his response. I will say that our, in our meeting with coastal commission staff, they were much more, much more positive comparatively than they have been to other projects that, you know, have wetland fill impacts in the coastal zone historically. The council is probably aware of a, a letter regarding the proposed waterfront drive extension project some time ago that was entirely different than this project in, in its impacts and in its, in its benefits in terms of capacity increase and that kind of thing. There are provisions in the coastal act that allow for wetland fill when it, when it comes to, when it achieves an incidental public service and safety improvements fall into that category as has been mentioned this evening. That's how the safety quarter improvements were ultimately approved by the coastal commission. And Marcela may be able to chime in more about that. But when that project was originally proposed, coastal commission staff was not very receptive to it. But ultimately it was approved by the coastal commission. In this case, in our meeting with coastal commission staff, they were more receptive to the ideas that we presented. And they actually floated the idea of presenting this concept to the commission itself in something of an advisory capacity before a permit actually came before them, which is somewhat unusual. And obviously that would be without any commitment from the commission about a future decision on a permit. But just to get feedback from the commissioners themselves as opposed to staff. But, you know, I think that we were, I would say pleasantly surprised about staff's reaction to the ideas when they were presented.
And I'll just add that our experience with the 101 corridor, we did receive letters from staff indicating that the project would never be approved. That we shouldn't waste taxpayers' funding. But what was important is that the project went to the commission itself. And it's just the same as me not being able to speak on behalf of my board because they are the, the decision makers. So during our discussions of the federal consistency and for the project, when we got our coastal permits, safety was high on the list. With the commissioners, we got, I believe it was a nine to one approval through the federal consistency, which was a big, big success. So I would just say, you know, staff may be a little more critical. And it's always important that the decision makers are the final decision.
All right. Thank you. Did we have any other questions before I send it to public council member Royal?
I just had a couple of more specific questions. So in the instances where wetland mitigation would be required, I, I know you mentioned a calculation. I don't know if it's going to be four to one or three to one or one to one would be nice, just putting that out there. But it is the requirement still to create new wetland, not enhance existing wetland? Is that still the expectation?
I am not an expert in this field. I think our project, we, we've seen some locations where we can create new wetlands rather than just enhancing. I, I did mention, you know, enhancing other existing wetlands, but there are also the opportunity for removing fill and creating wetlands, which would be part of that kind of mitigation suite. And I don't have, I don't know what the ratio, you know, we don't know what those ratios, kind of like you mentioned, that's, those are things we, that have to be worked out through the permitting process.
Okay, I, I guess my concern is that various agencies seem to be really running out of places to make new wetland in the, in the area, which we've seen delaying all these, I mean, certainly seen that be a component of the delay. I mean, certainly seen that be a component of the delay for other projects. So I guess I have concerns that. Do you know what the, the proposed wetland impacts will be? Of this project as, as described?
Not off the top of my head, as far as like number of acres impacted. No, I don't know that number. I know that we. In comparatively, if I remember back, we have certainly have a ratio, I don't know, you know, above. I can't remember, two to one, three to one, four to one, you know, that of where we could actually remove fill. There were N city-owned parcels that were under our control in order to kind of get that. That and which is adjacent to the parcel there, adjacent to Mauer Marsh and those restoration areas near the, the Bay Shore Mall.
Yeah, and can I quickly add, excuse me, Caltrans did implement a new program called the Advanced Mitigation Program. Where they do mitigation upfront with kind of on the credit system. So we would certainly be asking our Caltrans partners. To include us in that program so that mitigation can be thought of early and we would just pay of money. To meet the Coastal Commission requirements.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a big one for me. I'll come back to it under comment, but. It's a huge element of how I'm considering the proposal. Could you? Todd or, or someone else, could you? Just go back, you know, we were going quickly, but can we go back to the pedestrian flashing beacon proposals? That did not include. A full stop for oncoming motorists. And then additionally, I was hoping we could look at the crossing. Of the waterfront trail at West Washington and that new road that would be created. Those were two areas where I, I didn't feel like I had enough information.
Sure. Yeah, so the flashing beacons would look something similar to this. Although, you know, those requirements are changing, but we would have a mid-block refu, based on the width of the roadway. You would need to have a refuge in the middle of the roadway to make sure that folks have a place to wait. If they need to before making the full crossing. These may end up requiring a mast arm. So. An overhead kind of, let me see, I've got another picture of that. Yeah, so picture, picture something kind of like this, but with the flashing beacon rather than the stop on red. So this type of signage and, and warning signage and that would be up here with a push button.
Forty mile per hour zones, right? Everywhere where those were suggested, was it 40 or 35?
Um, you know, I think we're only at 45 on the southern. If we go back to this map, I think. Okay, this is a good one for an overview. I think we're at 45 up to the mall area. And then it drops to 40 and then 35. I don't know exactly where those boundaries are. And I apologize for that.
Forty before Pearson's, if you're going northbound, I just looked, I did street view.
Okay.
Unless it's changed since. Yeah, it looked like it was 40 and then perhaps below 40 in certain places. I'm just thinking about the. Yeah, pedestrians crossing mid-block in those locations and. Wanting to understand that better. And then the crossing of. It was in your section about the new portion going through the balloon track. I know that right, yes, right where commercial. Oh, I'm struggling with maps here. So where the waterfront trail crosses West Washington right now is.
Oh, yeah, it's off, it's cut off, yeah.
Place. As a trail user, and then it would be crossing a new street again, right? So.
Yeah.
Into the detail of the design there, but I was wondering if you could speak to some of the design considerations there.
You know, I may have that on the larger view, but I, I might try to pull that up on the other screen. We definitely want to clean that up. I know what you're saying. There's no facility across Washington. So that, that's part of our recommendations is to make that a standard, a nice pedestrian class one trail crossing. So this, this connection here swings down towards Washington and it, oh, maybe I have a better, oh, here we go. There we go. So this would swing down towards Washington and create an improved crossing for anybody that's either on Washington or on this new trail.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I saw that Councilmember Castellano had another question if you're done. All right.
Just a quick question. According to the timeline, it looks like 2022 is when funding, you know, this congestion relief program could be applied for. And then what would be the timing, the timeline for actual like construction to use, you know, so like completion?
Yeah, I can, I can assist with that. The Solutions for Congested Corridor Program is currently a two-year cycle. So they have a call for projects and then they fund. The next year because of the requirement that you have to, this is construction only funding. So you have to be through all of your other, other projects. When they were developing the guidelines for this current cycle, and they're going to be announcing those winners in a next month in December and in November. They considered doing the next cycle as a four-year program. So in 2022, the applicant, the call for projects will go out. And then there'll be about at least four years, if not five, where you could request your funding to be programmed. So we would look at probably the outer years, we'd have to be through environmental or very close to environmental to be successful. And then the other components are design and right of way, which may take time. So we might go for those, for those outer years. And again, the Solutions for Congested Corridor Program allows you to segment. So we could take one segment at a time. And they do, their current guidelines do state that. If your segment is the final component of a, of a corridor, then it gets a higher priority. So if we're successful in one. Then we have a better chance for the next grant application.
All right, is that all of our questions? And with that, I will invite any public comment, and I believe we have a few. So Assistant City Manager Powell, do you like to invite them up?
Um, Mayor, yes, we had several members who had asked to speak. I don't have a list of their names, but if they, I see M Clark has their hand raised up. And if we could just call on, ask everyone to raise their Zoom hand, that would make it easy to call.
Sure. And since you can see the, whose hands are raised, I will ask you to call on them, please.
Okay, I'm calling on M Clark first and then we'll move on. And you'll have three minutes.
Hi there, this is McKenzie Clark. I actually work with GHD and I do not know how I raised my hand. Oh, so I apologize for that.
All right, our next raised hand is Colin Fisk.
Hi. Thanks, everybody. As you know, my name is Colin Fisk with the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities and. I wanted to emphasize, as we've been talking about, that, you know, just since this most recent Broadway corridor planning process started about a year ago. At least four people walking or biking on Broadway have been hit and killed by cars. And I just want to acknowledge that and name them, that Eureka resident Ashley Madonia was killed last December while walking. Eureka resident Kelsey Diffen was killed in March while pushing a stroller. Eureka resident Thomas Burns was killed just last Saturday while riding a bike. And a person whose name I have not been able to find reported unfortunately was killed while riding a bike just a few weeks before that. Just want to remind us that these aren't statistics, they're people and, you know, they're members of our community. And they were constituents, you know, that you were representing as elected officials before their lives were cut short. So as folks have said, this is an urgent situation. It is a crisis. And with that in mind, I want to express my gratitude to Jesse Willer and the other city staff who. Have begun working on critical safety improvements to Broadway that can be implemented in the near future. Regardless of the outcome of the long-term planning process. I fully support the additional proposed pedestrian crossings and the other improvements, which I think will save lives. And I would like to see some additional safety elements incorporated into the near-term plans. My suggestion, and I, I appreciate Councilmember Castellano's. Question about CRTP. And my suggestion would be that you form, you know, an ad hoc committee or a stakeholder working group or some such. Thing for CRTP and others to provide input to city staff and Caltrans on the near-term changes. I'm not suggesting some sort of long process. We've already been through that. But just that there'd be a mechanism for safety advocates to provide input. And helping sure that we take every opportunity for the near-term improvements that we can. The staff report said, and, and you've heard tonight, the long-term planning process. Well, a quote from the staff report, it's anticipated to be laborious, long-term and likely expensive. And we just have to reckon with the fact that the longer it takes to make improvements and to make significant improvements, the more people will die. So I think. We can't afford to wait and I really want to see us do as much as possible with these near-term improvements. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, the next hand I see raised is Jennifer Calt.
Hi there. My name's Jennifer Calt and I represent Humboldt Baykeeper. And. I appreciate you taking my comments and having this discussion. I guess. I'm, I'm left wondering why this long-term planning process. Is urgent enough to be the subject of a public, a special public meeting when what's urgent really doesn't seem to be. The subject of discussion tonight, and that is the short-term fixes. And I. I apologize if this was raised in the stakeholder meeting today. It was just called yesterday, and so I was not able to make it to that meeting. But, you know, as a stakeholder who's participated in two public workshops and two stakeholder meetings. You know, it's, it's just feeling like there's been a lot of conversations that we weren't part of. And so I'm just wondering why voting, why, why calling for direction on this now? And then. In addition, I, I really would like to raise an issue that hasn't been brought up tonight with the. Well, the balloon track, the Costa couplet would be quite a bit more expensive since Caltrans estimated $50 million to clean it up. But that is going to be a very long-term process. With the middle couplet, there's mitigation areas that this alignment would go through. And my understanding is that these mitigation areas are set aside as protected wetlands in perpetuity. And. I don't, I don't know by what mechanism some decision maker can decide to just scrap that and push a road through it after all. So I just, I just have to wonder why give direction to the city staff to push forward on something that there are so many questions outstanding on. So. I hope we can just focus on the short-term fixes and not spend another 10, 20, or even 30 years. Counting how many people get killed on this road while we come up with ideas that then get. Shot down or spend a lot of money on and then find out they're not feasible. So. Good luck in your decision and thank you for taking my comments.
Thank you.
Mayor, the next hand raised is Kelly Wayhausen.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Perfect. So I have lived in this community for over 30 years, and I also get the privilege of serving this community as a healthcare provider. But I've also been the unfortunate victim of being a pedestrian hit by a car while I was legally crossing the street in the crosswalk. And this was just one block away from my house on F Street. The proposed changes to Broadway are going to have a significant impact on F Street. And F Street's really special because it's a highly used entry and exit to Eureka and Henderson Center. And it crosses both the city and county jurisdictions and connects the waterfront on both ends via way of Herrick Avenue. And I appreciate that Eureka is focusing on how to make our area safer for all modes of transportation. And I hope they take into account the effect that the changes on Broadway will have on F Street. When commuters want to avoid Broadway traffic, they can exit at Herrick and take F Street all the way through Eureka. And the recent changes on Broadway have already caused increased traffic and there's no slowing measures. So the traffic is unsafe for the residential areas it's traveling through. There's been three incidents alone that have personally affected me. My neighbor had a truck run into their dining room of their house. I was hit by a car while crossing the street and my elderly neighbor, they were hit by, as a pedestrian crossing the street. In the same location and they passed away. All of this happened in a two-block area of F Street and within a two-month timeframe. And when the traffic is further slowed on Broadway, there's going to be more commuters taking F Street, making the current situation worse. As Eureka plans to make Broadway safer for all modes of commuting, I hope they will do the same for the other areas that will be impacted. And if the proposed improvements to Broadway are approved, they should be implemented at the same time as improving F Street safety. With improvements, F Street can be a beautiful, welcoming, safe entrance to Eureka that is really lacking on that side of town. I'm very excited. Eureka is taking steps to make all modes of transportation safer. And Broadway has proven to be one of the most unsafe locations. I'm excited to see the changes be made and be a part of the process to make these positive changes in Eureka. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, you're on mute. You're on mute, Ping.
Our next speaker is Karen Underwood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, wait, I have to, I go ahead and start my.
There you are.
There I am. Hello.
Hello.
Good evening, Council. This is Karen Underwood with the Humboldt Trail Council, and. We've involved in all of the planning since the November meeting a year ago where the public first came in and put stickies on maps. And of course, our first interest was that the, that one of the couplets would not run along next to the waterfront trail. And that, from our constituents, that's been a goal and that, and that was respected. So we appreciate that. I know the committee has worked hard or the group in putting this together. We too have concerns about the mitigation of the marsh and really feel strongly that. The short-term, the short-term planning for safety on Broadway should be the priority. All of the people who use the waterfront trail have to cross the 101 corridor and safety is such a high priority for that. So would like to see emphasis put on the short-term safety measures that were brought out in the meetings and also. That Jesse discussed today in the plan. So we, we really would like to encourage you to support that and it, and that's the near-term action plan. And a final thing that came out in many of the meetings was this idea of calming the traffic. You know, because it's, it's going through a city, their businesses on both sides, so much is happening and that traffic. Is just barreling through that town. So there are many things discussed that could calm traffic and. Just would like to see that move forward also. So thank you very much for your consideration and good luck with this hard decision.
Thank you.
Mayor, the next person is Emily Sinkorn.
Thank you. Oh, there you are.
Hello, my name's Emily Sinkorn with Redwood Community Action Agency, and. We were part of the project team in the beginning for the first community meeting last year. And we also were very grateful to support with a support letter. The city and HCOG and Caltrans proposal to the shop program for the, for the southern section. And just want to really emphasize that the, the southern section has improvements that I think would really help. And just want to really emphasize that the, the southern section has improvements that I think would really help safety for all modes. And I'm really glad that that is being pursued as a potential standalone project. And hope that even if this is, this first try for funding is not successful to, to keep moving that southern gateway to the city forward. And I also really agree with a lot of the commenters about the imperative need to improve safety now. And in addition to the elements that were brought up by city staff and Caltrans so far for discussion for the near-term action plan, I would also love to see safety improvements at the existing signalized intersections. And I see that that seems missing from the near-term action plan to me. And one of those, you know, reasons, you know, being that the, I think the mid-block crossings are needed in particular locations. But for the safety of families and people crossing with strollers, people accessing the trail, having a place to cross where traffic is actually required to stop will be very helpful. And there's potential ways of having, that I hope that Caltrans and the city can consider with leading pedestrian intervals or other sort of protections for pedestrians crossing to make that crossing distance shorter with less conflict points. And in particular at Wabash and 14th, where we really have seen clusters of a lot of people being hit and killed while walking or biking. I greatly appreciate the project team and city staff and HCOGS overall look at, at this corridor. And it's a big undertaking that will, you know, take long-term planning and a lot of steps. So I really appreciate that there is now being a focus on near-term solutions and hope that those can really be brought back for urgent discussions at city council meetings soon here in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I know there was some other folks who had asked to speak, but they're not raising their hand through Zoom, so I don't know if they are having difficulty with that.
I am having difficulty. This is Janelle.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyway, I want to echo what people have said about safety, of safety and dealing with near-term safety issues. I also am concerned about the wetlands issue. But actually here, tonight, I'm here because of the area between the two couplets, which is a two-way street with no left turns. And so it's sort of putting business properties in an island where they can only go one direction. And so my husband and I happen to have inherited property in that section. And a few years ago, there was a meeting and we got a notice about it. But we haven't gotten, we didn't get a notice about the August and we didn't get a notice about this. So if you listen, that the, the property owners along that stretch there may have some concerns and would like to know what's happening just so that we can make plans and figure out what to do next. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Janelle.
Mayor Lisa Hockaday has her hand up.
All right, welcome, Ms. Hockaday.
I'm finding the mute. I actually, my name is Mark Mueller. I'm with Lisa Hockaday. She'll probably want to talk also. And I wanted to, one, thank the team for coming up with such great plans. I really appreciate that it's multimodal. And and I wish there were more things in the worst areas that were immediately available. I'm not sure what could be done, but I like, I mean, the southern area, I think it's great that there's a near-term plan and I support that. I think that's good. Short of slowing, I know, I'm always laughing when people ask for slower speed limits, but I feel like, like somehow we need to do something to get people to slow down and mellow out, basically going through the more narrow areas of Broadway, the middle and, and northern sections. And I know if there's any way we can do, anything we can do to traffic calm, I can just drive my bike right down the number two lanes either way. That would slow things down a little bit. That takes a little bravery. I think I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Can you tell me your name again? Because I forgot to write it down.
It is Mark Mueller, M U E L L E R.
Thank you. And then Lisa, if you would like to speak, do you want us to start the three minutes again so you get your full time? I mean, the best thing now. So do you mind doing that? Assistant City Manager Powell, just starting her time again.
I think I'm okay, actually. Well, if you don't want my time again, I, I just want to make a comment about how nice it was to work with the team. I did some of the modeling. I'm from Caltrans. And everybody was so receptive to ideas on how to improve conditions for bicycles and pedestrians.
Thank you. And is that our last speaker?
Yes, Mayor, that is the last one that I am aware of.
That was a nice way to end it. And it's also seven o'clock. We've been here two hours. So why don't we take five minutes? We'll all stretch our legs, do what we need to do. We'll come back for comments. So we'll see you back in five minutes. Thank you, ma'am. Hello. And I know Councilmember Burgele was in the office.
I'm here.
All right, then I think we have all returned and I will, we finished up with our public comment and our questions. I'll bring it back to Council for comments. Does anybody have a comment? Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Arroyo. I knew it would happen. Then the floodgates would open. But you get to do it.
Thank you, Mayor Stephen. Well, I, I share the concerns of many of the folks who've spoken and reached out to us about this. You know, this, this plan, this initial plan. And who have concerns around wetland impacts and but more urgent concerns around, you know, short-term improvements being necessary for safety and in particular bikes and pedestrians, but also motorists. And so I share all those concerns. I am cognizant of the fact that this meeting was really, you know, this topic was agendized as this Broadway quarter plan and then near-term improvements are an offshoot of that, but weren't originally part of the scope and sort of weren't. I don't feel that this discussion was publicly noticed about let's brainstorm or give feedback about near-term improvements. It was sort of, you know, around this long-term planning project. And so I, I don't know that this is the right place to go into a lot of detail around that because I think in line with some of our commenters' points, you know, we need to talk about that, but we also need to have the right people in the room. We need to have, you know, the, the safety person from Caltrans who will be available to answer questions about what kind of metrics we need to get us to, what kind of place as far as, you know, what kind of commitments they, they can offer. So I don't really want to spend a lot of the time going into that, even though I have a, I have a lot to say about the topic. So I don't want it to seem like a lack of urgency as much as I don't think it was agendized in that way. And, and I don't think, you know, we'll get the input that we need from Caltrans staff. If we go into the short-term stuff tonight.
If we're providing direction, we can provide direction that we need to go into short-term stuff soon. So that could be part of it.
Okay, yeah, fair point. Yeah, I, I think people in the community might have different feedback, though, if they knew that that was the, the the umbrella of the discussion. But I, I do agree that those those pedestrian flashing beacons and crossings with pedestrian islands are, they do seem like an appealing option along with the improvements to existing infrastructure. Excuse me, intersections where there are, there are issues around visibility and clarity for both pedestrians and drivers. I, I have some concerns that all of the places save maybe one where those are proposed are 40 mile per hour zones where people are often going faster, it seems. So I'd like to understand that better. I know, I know there can be pedestrian crossings not at an intersection with a flashing beacon at higher speeds than that, but I am concerned about that as a standalone measure. And I'd like to explore the feasibility of possibly reducing the speed. I know there's a lot of speed studies that have to go into that. And I know we're trying to reduce congestion. But for that stretch where there have been so many fatalities to be, to continue to be a 40 miles per hour concerns me. So those are some initial thoughts around the near-term things. I guess I'm cautiously optimistic about the, the couplet that's been proposed. I think there are some serious environmental questions that I have, particularly around the mitigation and what that requirement would look like and whether that's really feasible. And therefore what that will look like as far as timeline for the project, because we've seen the, you know, this top priority project of the safety quarter just takes so much longer than I think we ever anticipated. So I, I honestly am concerned that the, the timeline for this would just be nowhere near what we need as far as addressing the, you know, the concerns that exist. So while it might be a, a good long-term vision, I'm more focused on the near term.
Thank you. And Councilmember Castellano?
Hey, everyone. Let's see, a few things. Can, can you hear me? Okay, my internet was slightly spotted early. Okay, great. And so I, I just want to speak briefly to the short term. I'm definitely in agreement about that need. And I appreciate that staff brought that forward as part of this. I, I think that's just, yeah, I, I just really appreciate your sense of hearing the community, you know, and seeing what's happening on, on a two, way too often basis. Let's see, related to that, I definitely support the formation of an ad hoc committee to look at this. I think, you know, we have a transportation commission. I, I imagine they would also potentially be useful for that process. I also, here's something I just want to bring to the table about that. I feel like in the, there needs to be some education and maybe some added education or attitudes too that people have towards pedestrians. Often, you know, I see comments like in social media and in publications that really express a cavalier attitude towards people who bike or walk to cross the street and it's not okay. And I think that there's something really shameful about that and about expressing that somehow because someone is crossing the street, not in a car, that their life is less valuable. And this is not a city that's behind that in any way whatsoever. And maybe we need to educate drivers and have a loud, some louder statements about that. I don't know if that might be some work we can do with our marketing organization as well. But I just want to put that on the table since we're talking about that issue. Because I think attitude plays in to behavior and how that's expressed. All that being said, I look forward to seeing that upcoming council meeting. In terms of the, the Broadway Quarter Project in the longer-term expression, I think a feeling, a feeling I have, a sense I get, and also looking at the different kind of ecological situations of, of the northern, middle and southern parts, I think it would be valuable, or I would suggest looking at breaking them down into sections. I'm more interested, and particularly, I don't, I don't have a clear sense of how the middle section could work with the you know, I, I am hesitant to be like completely outwardly supportive about that until I understand how we would engage with the Coastal Commission and with the marshes in that area. You know, right now, I don't feel like I have enough information about how that might, how we might do that responsibly. I do appreciate the potential for developing other marshlands, but I do have concerns about that middle section. I'm not completely against it, but I, I think I just need more information to be to say that that should be a priority. And I think that maybe that would, that focusing on the northern and southern would give us more time to understand the environmental implications of the middle. In terms of the northern, I support there being a cleanup of that air, of the problematic areas there. I also let's see, would support just a continuation. And I think what then I, my mind goes to is thinking about smart planning and place-making in relationship to as we change like traffic patterns and land use patterns in that area. And so just in, in terms of that, I think it might be valuable to, you know, do potential sequoia zoning for like a small, small tech industry and, and dig ones policies. Also, you know, zoning that would continue more of the old-town, old-town feel. And then, you know, anyway, I, I would like to look at how we develop place-making in that area where we move forward with it. I think we have plenty of time to, to do some pretty interesting, take some interesting approaches that would enrich the quality of life there. And then, yeah, you know, and again, not opposed to other aspects, I just would like to affirm an interest in working in a diplomatic and responsible way with the Coastal Commission as we move forward. And I appreciate that there has been outreach about that already.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Burgele?
So I just have some brief comments. First of all, I guess what I want to say is that for me, the priority is the near term. I think that, I really thank you, Councilmember Castellano, for what you said about the way that people treat pedestrians and cyclists. It really is incredible. Sometimes I wonder if we live in a civilized society, the way we talk about each other. But the blame shifting and the victim blaming really isn't, isn't helpful. So that, I'm looking forward to the presentation coming forward with Caltrans and making some firm commitments to what we can change in the near, near future. I too have concerns about the environmental impacts and would like to have more information on that. I would hate for us to spin our wheels with the Coastal Commission and then have them just shut it down and spend all that time. I think that there currently are opportunities for us to make changes that can make some good changes without having to go through that whole process right away. I think I'd be more interested in looking I think I'd be more interested in looking at long term. Uh, once some of these other problems are mitigated because we've honestly, we've been talking about this for ten years or more. And having special meetings and those types of things and and people are still dying and people are still getting hit and and it's not, you know, when it's not always the walking person or the, um, you know, the cyclist's fault. And I think we need to consider that those people have families as well. So I got off on a diatribe there, but it just really bothers me when people talk that way. So, um, you know, I I like the idea of having some way to get across Broadway. I know for me, it's been a real issue since my kids were little because we would take our bike and we'd want to go to Old Town, for instance, and we'd have to cross fourth and fifth. Um, going to the mall, we'd have to cross forth, uh, Broadway. And Eureka Natural Falls, we have to cross Broadway. And so having opportunities for us to be able to do that on our bikes and walk safely could make huge changes. And so I'm really looking forward to what is brought back in a couple of weeks from Caltrans and solidifying a plan to move forward with that.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Messner, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, um, I, well, I'm really in agreement with the comments that have already been made and I do have some real concerns about the short term mitigation for sure with safety and the environmental impacts as well. So thank you for offering to come back and with with those who can give us more information about what some of the short term solutions could be and how we might be able to work with those now. And I really appreciate the work that you guys have done. I know you've done a lot of hard work to work with partners and come up with solutions and done your, done the studies. So it's not, I guess I'm just concerned, you know, that that we would be waiting another ten years to see these things taken care of, these issues taken care of before not looking at those short term. So I really appreciate you coming forward and saying you will address those next at at a meeting soon because those are something that we really need to look at. And I was, I did want to make a comment in the years that we saw there was a few years that that it dropped pretty significantly, some of those safety, uh, some of the people. There was a graph that you showed and it looked like there was a couple of years where it dropped pretty low and then it came hopped back on up. And I had some questions about that. What was going on during those years that created um, a drop in comparison? Was there traffic cops during that time? Was there like, what were some of those things? And and possibly we could bring some of those things back, but I agree to lighting is a huge issue. And if you understood or if we have data on timelines of the day and in regard to deaths and injuries during the evening, especially in those hours of lighting issues. So I mean, I think those are things that we would need. If you have data, that'd be great. I would love to hear that, um, at that meeting that you bring back so that we can find out more information about what would be helpful in the short term with specific to our area and what we deal with.
All right. Well, Brad sure did set you up. I hope you're ready to come back in two weeks, Jesse with them. It sounds like the direction really is to continue this conversation with that as well as to start getting more information about the environmental implications. Was there anything else that we felt for direction? We really wanted to give to our team tonight?
Madam, Madam Mayor, if I can jump in and I apologize for the dog in the background, but I I had unmute at some point. While we complete, your staff completely understands the need for the short term improvements and we're absolutely going to come back with that with Caltrans and the project team. And um, understand that there are a lot of moving parts to the long term goal. This project, this plan and the grant that funded it have a defined scope and they have a defined timeline that can't go on forever. Uh, and so we, we really do need some direction uh, as to where do we go with the plan and and direction for the mayor or input for the mayor when it comes to the HCOG meeting where this plan will be considered. You know, what is the city's position on this plan as it stands? And if that's breaking it down by segment, uh, the southern, middle and northern segments. And uh, pursuing alternatives that show themselves to be feasible as we go through the further studies, environmental work. Um, we really need some firmer direction, I think, on those fronts than we have currently, uh, that we really don't have the opportunity to to extend that analysis and come back to council multiple times over, you know, several months.
Okay, Councilmember Messner?
Um, I actually would like to see that happen because I do know your funding is limited. There's a timeline for sure. And so if we weren't, if I wasn't clear um, on that, I would like to see that move forward, but I do like the separating it out. Even as Marcella mentioned, the fact that that separation out could actually provide further funding in in the long term. Um, it's possible that that might actually move it forward faster, the project faster. But I do have some concerns about the environmental impacts and some of that middle section as well. So just tho- those and and the Coastal Commission, you know, I wouldn't want to see an entire thing shut down because of a section that was, you know, that that there were issues with and just see all of it shut down. So I would, I think that if it would be helpful if we could move forward in the with the three different sections as as broken down, broken out into segments, I think that might be helpful.
All right, Councilmember Castellano?
Just a quick question for staff about that. Do you perceive that being problematic or does that seem like it could be beneficial to the project to to break it down into sections?
I I would want to absolutely have Jesse and Todd chime in on this as well, but I can see that not even necessarily from a construction phasing standpoint or anything like that, but just looking at the corridor in three distinct segments for the purpose of analysis and the city's position on each of them. If there's a firm position on the north and the south and the middle is somewhat unknown because of the unknowns associated with it, and that's where we need to do further analysis during the environmental phase and that kind of thing. And then make a a final decision on what the city's desire would be to Caltrans. Um, that might be a good way of approaching it. Jesse, Todd, any additional thoughts?
Yeah, and I think that's, that's important to understand. The next phase is if this project were to move along in a similar fashion to a, you know, this is a highway project for the most part. And so if we were to move forward in the standard way, and hopefully I don't butcher this, my understanding is we would have to have a project initiation document as Todd mentioned earlier. Um, and in that project initiation document, it would be there'd be further flushing out of what the alternatives are and and what all the you know, what are all the drivers for each piece of those in much more detail. So it wouldn't be that there's one alternative and that that's the one that's moving ahead. It would be, there would be some analysis as far as environmental right away to flush out, like, what are the actual costs? Because right now we're flying very high with our cost estimates because, you know, we 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 don't have the you know, the the grant we have now does not give us the, afford us the budget to go out and do that higher or more detailed analysis. So that next step, PSR, PDS would be that phase of the next phase of project programming where we could, you would dig in deeper and you get more of those details. And you would, um, that would be part of your environmental document as well, where you're actually doing that analysis with more detail because right now that's not where we're at with this part of the project. We're, we're kind of looking at it from a, a really, you know, a pretty high elevation and trying to come up with us, you know, trying to find out what are the drivers and what are the potential solutions and alternatives that we can, that as we presented in the plan. Todd, do you, you want to add anything further to that?
Just a little bit, yeah. Uh, the project is essentially already broken down into three parts and it has been from the beginning. So there, you know, there could have been alternatives. It's kind of like a Lego board, right? You could put different pieces, different areas. And there was originally an alternative that had, as I showed in my presentation, a couplet all the way down. We realized quickly that it maybe not necessary be just too problematic. And and so we we shrunk down the southern section to staying within the right of way and we had some room there to work with. We can absolutely move forward, I think. Um, and and the benefits will all be broken down. The costs are certainly broken down by segment. There's one benefit analysis that's not, and that's the operational analysis. And I could work with my folks to try to figure out a way to break that out, but our scope didn't allow us to do three different model runs for each different scenario of how you mix and match it. But, yeah, and they all need to have logical terminology. That's an important thing to keep in mind in terms of moving projects forward. Uh, the southern section, uh, has a logical terminus, uh, which is Truesdale, which connects out to the trail. So we want to make sure that we're not building, I think Jesse alluded to this earlier. We don't want to build something that creates a gap, right? And so we're building a, a a portion of the corridor that all of a sudden you're, you're dropping people off into no man's land. So if we were to section off the northern area, I'd want to make sure we stop it around like Hawthorne, somewhere where people can peel off and go one way or the other if they're on a bike or a pedestrian. Uh, the middle section is a challenge. Uh, I also think it brings some of the best value though. So just as an aside, when I inherited this project, when I became the project manager, we had a switch midway. I don't know how many of you noticed or were aware of that, but I I wanted to try to keep it in the right of way. I I knew that we were going to have trouble moving west, but it just didn't get us the benefit that I think this corridor really deserves long term. And I I strongly believe that if we can get behind this as a long term vision, there, there are good projects to fall back on that fall, that come short of that. And we've talked about those, uh, the short term improvements, absolutely one hundred percent behind those. Uh, if we get good direction on this, this project gets approved, it becomes an adopted plan. Uh, that opens up HCP, uh, funding opportunities in twenty twenty one. I know that sounds far away, but in this world it's not. And and so there, there are opportunities that open up with just completing this plan. Uh, this is the step one. And so I just want to reemphasize that and I appreciate all the discussion. I I totally understand the need to look at safety today. Um, so anyway, with that, I'll mute myself again.
Does anybody have anything to add to Heidi, uh, to Councilmember Messner? It looked like you had something more to say, Councilmember Messner?
Oh, I just thank you for that clarification. I think so. I think I understand what you're saying is that if we adopt this and we say yes to this when we, when uh, the funding comes through and when we start moving forward, that's when further detail would be determined. So really, we're looking at if we say yes to this right now and we approve this, then it would move forward into this, it down the road to this project and then we can provide some of those details that we're asking for in regard to particularly the the middle section. Is that correct? Okay, I hear, I see you guys nodding your head. So I would say, um, it sounds like a good plan then. We should probably move forward.
Mayor Seaman, can I add one thing as well?
Yes, you may.
The the next step would be the project initiation document, um, working very closely with Caltrans and the guidelines that were just adopted also does require partnerships. So in the past, I think a lot of, uh, project initiation documents were done, um, with not much partnerships. But at least not on HCOG side, but that is a requirement. And although I'm retiring, uh, I know Jesse, um, will make sure that, um, we do do this together. And again, it's not just government agencies. It is our transportation stakeholders and the general public.
Thank you. Councilmember Arroyo?
Is there any reason why, um, this document or this plan cannot propose phases wherein like Truesdale to Hillfriker and the near term improvements that include problematic intersections and and crossing locations where they don't exist? Why that couldn't be phase one? And then phase two, three, whatever be the the next elements? Is there is there some barrier to that being the way we proceed?
I don't think so. I mean, the, uh, which phase would move forward first? I don't think there's anything that would dictate that other than probably funding or how quickly the project could uh, make it through, you know, environmental clearances and those sorts of things.
I would love to see that if there's, you know, you've already done the work to initiate the near term improvement. Sounds like there needs to be some more stakeholder engagement around, around refining those, but also recognizing that this is outside of your scope and there's sort of limited time to to do that. So my recommendation would be to get that happening, but that you know, I would love to see us adopt a phase one that includes those things so that it is clear that those are a top priority and a near term priority, rather than leaving it to some like isolated process where they're not really included in the document. That would be my strong preference and then to allow for the next, the subsequent phases to continue through this process that we know will take some time. If that is on the table, then that is what I would like to see happen. It sounds like it is, so. Other council members, what are your thoughts about them?
Yeah, have any, have any thoughts about that?
Do you understand what I'm saying? Sorry, I I don't mean to be insulting, but is it clear what I'm suggesting?
What I, what I'm hearing is, um, and and if I'm just thinking about the phases, it, the first phase would include, say, the southern section, which is pretty planned, plus then pro- near, uh, the near term projects that are already identified.
Yeah, it's like making that a part of the project that will come first. And then these other things will come second, but it doesn't mean that we're not going to try to pursue the option that sort of has it all as far as amenities for, for all roadway users, but that, you know, much like how there was the red bike lane added between Arcada and Eureka, when we knew it was several years out for any other roadway improvements, you know, this would be a way of like formalizing our version of the red bike lane in the plan that we already have in place and utilizing the work that staff have and can, you know, and our partners have already done.
All right, and at first, Councilmember Castellano did have her hand up. She's put it back down. I just want to make sure I'm not skipping over her.
I'll be quick. I mean, I I was just going to respond to Councilmember Arroyo's idea that I, I mean, I'm open to including the immediate improvements in this plan and not a second, another plan. Is that what, am I understanding that correct? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, that we yeah, add a phasing, like a a component of the final document that says that phase one shall be near term improvements and the section that's frankly less expensive and easier to do that we're already presenting funding for.
I mean, I'm, I'm personally fine with that. And I think, I mean, it it gets a little complicated because I think we're then, we're then using kind of phase in two different ways. But I would just say that, uh, there's, there's the near term improvements and then there's kind of northern, middle and southern portions that could be kind of broken down in different ways. Um, but I'm definitely in favor of continuing to include the near term improvements in this document as well.
And to to clarify, the reason why I would put that southern extent in phase one is because we've already gotten a partnership going to apply for money for it. So, you know, I don't know if that strengthens its competitiveness in any way, shape or form for the shop funds, but if it does so by saying like this is top priority. Then, you know, and and I do hope staff will feel comfortable to jump in if this is too heavy a lift or something that doesn't quite fit. or something that doesn't quite fit.
Okay, Councilmember Bregel, I see you, but it looks like Brad wants to say something. I think it's probably related to this. And then I promise I have not missed you. All right, go ahead, Brad.
Thank you. And I I wasn't certain whether it's appropriate for me to step in or not. But from my perspective, you know, we have a long range plan that the city's worked on in three segments. We have a a much more immediate issue, which I don't think needs to be in any kind of a long range plan. We have to react to what we see going on today and yesterday and the day before. You know, if if we were to sort of combine it with the southern section, it's not really part of the scope of what we submitted there. And and quite frankly, I I don't know if it doesn't make it harder if we try to somehow take those those immediate concerns that we've got and build them into this long range plan as opposed to saying, we have two problems. We have, we have, what are we going to do in the long term for Broadway? And then we have today's problem, which is we have people at risk that we need to deal with. So from my perspective, it 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 may complicate the issue to build it into the long range plan.
Okay, thank you. So and let me let Councilmember Bregel, and then I'll let you respond to that, Councilmember Arroyo.
So that was actually my question. I feel like if we, it wasn't a question, but what I was thinking is that if we add it to the plan as we have the plan, does that mean that we can't pursue immediate action? Because the immediate action needs to happen before 10 years or 15 years or whatever the plan is going to be. We need to get going on that now, like now. So if there's no, if it doesn't impact our ability to work on things now, and I think Brad said it very well, if we can, if it doesn't impact that, then I would probably say, yeah, then add it to the plan. But if it's going to impact our current getting to work, getting busy, getting things done now for these imperative improvements for pedestrians and cyclists on Broadway, I think that I would say that I wouldn't want to include it in the plan. It would have to be, if it didn't impact it, then yes, if we could still go forward. If we can't still go forward with the plans we we're doing now, then what they're going to bring back to us in two weeks, then I would say I wouldn't support it. Does that make sense?
You wouldn't support the change?
Yeah, I would, I would like to see us work on the current, the improvements that need to happen now. And if we add those to phase one, if there's a negative impact and that causes us to not be able to work on the things that need to be worked on now, I won't support it.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you don't mean the whole plan. You just mean you don't support adding that to the.
If it impacts our ability to make change now, yes.
Okay, Councilmember Arroyo, there's more information for you, too.
Thank you. Yeah, I apologize that this is awkward because we're thinking through this as it's happening. So my intent is to say that I would like the near term improvements to make an appearance in this plan because I think near term might be different in our language than it is in transportation language. And I I think near term to us probably means like, Councilmember Bregel, you and I are like, yep, before we are out of office in the next two years. I think that there, they might take longer. Many improvements might take longer than that, even if they're seen as near term improvements. My hope is that we will immediately make some improvements in as quick a course as possible. Granted, this isn't, it isn't our right of way. So the the places where this needs to happen are not the city's property. And so we have a role, but I don't, I I want to be sure that it's reflected as a top priority in this plan, even though the plan is a long term vision intended for us to embark on a long term process. I still think there's utility in having it reflected there. Staff and consultants have already done the work. And we're talking about it now in this space. So I think it deserves to be in the plan and be called out as a top priority so that if we need to refer back to that later and say, hey, this document we worked on together, this project that was a collaboration between the city and Caltrans and HCOG specified that these were top priorities that is there. So even if it's a little bit superfluous, I think it's important for it to be in there because the work has already been done and it could be useful later.
And if you didn't see, Brad gave the thumbs up to that, as in, I think that that was a better clarification of of it. So Councilmember Bregel.
So just to be clear, adding this to the phase one, we would still have the ability to begin working on these things right away. It wouldn't be that we wouldn't be able to work on them until the plan is approved. We could still be working on things. Is that correct? Or?
Two hands up, so.
I saw Brad had to stand up.
So did Jesse.
Okay, great. Anyone, everyone?
I'll go first. I think, I think what I'm hearing you say is the short, like like we talked about throughout, the near term plans are the the number one priority. And I, those could be the zero phase, like those are happening already and are going to continue to roll forward. And they can be documented in the plan such that those are the, you know, the high priority. Those are, you know, that's what we want to stress to be, what is move forward, you know, immediately. And then the other phases, you know, there is some benefit to, I think, having them be able to be changed or moved as far as priorities concerned, because we never know with the funding or opportunities that are going to come along down the road. So having some flexibility there would be advantageous, I think, for the plan. But I I certainly think we can easily incorporate a, you know, kind of that right now priority for, you know, as much immediacy for the short term, you know, the near term, you know, easier, well, easier, short term improvements in in the plan. So I think that's definitely, all that is possible.
Okay, and then Brad, do you want to add to that?
I think Jesse covered it perfectly. If we, if we don't make it part of phase one, we make it sort of the preamble. This has to happen right now and then go into the rest of it. I think that works fine.
Does that work for y'all? Do you feel like you guys have direction now? Was that, so when we're saying we put it in the plan and then we give them direction to move the plan forward?
So I think my concern around this is because we have not talked with the, with David Morgan about what exact improvements will be made. We have some suggestions on on one slide that we saw, which was a great start, and then a couple of possible locations, and then some public feedback that there are additional locations where that could be considered. Do you feel that there is enough information to insert something into this plan so we can wrap it up and then, and and make that specific enough to be helpful, but broad enough to still include some rapid fires stakeholder engagement? I think that's a question to staff.
Yes, excuse me, yes. I do think we can, I think even with, I I think having it in there as a prior, showing what you would like to prioritize and having that as a priority in the plan, I think that could go ahead without having any indication from Caltrans as to what the actual schedule would be to implement those because it would still have that push of like, this is what we want to do. I, we, I think we also would probably have time, we will have time if we can have, I don't know, exact schedule in November, the second meeting, that we would be able to have Caltrans back to discuss, you know, those near term plans specifically. I would think that we would still have time to incorporate that feedback back into the plan. It seems reasonable. I'm going to look at Todd, he's smiling, and I'm not sure if he's nodding or if he's disagreeing.
That would be after the HCOG meeting, though. There's this, no, it wouldn't be two days before.
I I was smiling because I saw Brad pop up on the screen with his space background. But yeah, I I guess my only reluctance is I don't want to draw out, like, I think we all get this is a top priority right now. Caltrans is at the table, city's at the table, HCOG's involved. I don't want to delay the long term plan because it also has its own schedule that is tight. If we want to meet that, that solutions for congested corridor program. So that's, that's my only hesitation, and I'm happy to take direction either way. Whatever you all want, we, you know, we'll work with staff to make that work. We had planned on having a list of short term implementation measures that could be deployed on the corridor short of any couplets. The specific locations of those require some engineering work that I don't think are appropriate to include in this plan. We're, that's, that's a different analysis that Jesse's working on and and Brian are working on with with Caltrans. But I I think the attention is in the room. And so I don't want, I don't know if, how to say, I I don't want there to be reluctance in terms of approving a long term vision, like a general plan-ish type thing for a transportation project because we see the need for an immediate remedy to a pressing concern. That's my only two cents. And Jesse, we can, we can talk offline about how to incorporate this into the the plan document. But I do want to keep that on schedule. We got grant timelines. We got that HCOG board meeting, and this has been a a lot of work that we have to assemble. So that's, that's all. I'll keep it at that.
Councilmember Messner?
Yeah, I hear you, Todd. That was, that was what I I felt like Brad was saying earlier, is that it's a little bit, that this larger project, we don't want to delay that in any way because we're doing something, we're adding to it, that we have to be careful of that. So for me, I'd, I'd love to, I I think he said it, that they're almost two separate things in a way, but we can say that we want to have some short term solutions involved, perhaps like add that to the language in this proposal, but we wouldn't be specific. Is that what you're saying we can do? Is that?
Yeah, almost like, yeah, yeah, almost like kind of a, like a 101 safety guidebook, right? Things that would are appropriate. Again, going back to that systemic nature of the issues we face, right? They could pop up anywhere. We don't want to chase collisions. We, we want to have a a a library of things that we we are, we have pre-vetted as a team that can be implemented and work with our partners to get them built as as soon as they can, whether that's through Caltrans funding that's available right now or in the next coming weeks, however fast that moves, that will be fantastic. Again, that that highway safety improvement program funding that will become available again in 2021, that's another short term opportunity. And then keep this, but but keep that as as kind of a separate. If if you guys have ever seen like an active transportation plan, oftentimes they have a chapter like that. This is like a a menu of things that can be deployed on these types of facilities. We'll tailor that to Broadway. These are the types of things, there are crossings, both pedestrian and and bike crossings, getting bike connections across from residential side to residential side across Broadway safe, in a more safe manner. Somebody mentioned LPI earlier, I think that was Emily Sinkhorn. Signal timing changes can have a big impact as well. Lighting, those are all things that can be deployed at any time. They don't necessarily conflict with the long term vision. And we can add in as a kind of like a menu of of things that can be done now.
Councilmember Arroyo?
I hear what you're saying, and I would like it to be in the plan anyway, personally. You know, even if it's like between 14th and Vigo, such and such things may be considered or whatever the, you know, whatever the span is where there's the most. And obviously, there's, there's concerns from pedestrians and bicyclists around along all of it. But I, when we start talking about the H sub funding round, you know, next year or the year after, I mean, that's already outside of the scope of this council's, you know, impact as far as decision making. So I I just, I'd like it to be captured, even if it's something that's brief and and allows room for interpretation when the stakeholder group is able to meet. Because I see utility in that. And, you know, when I work on projects, going back to where, you know, where priorities were mentioned, I've found it to be useful, you know. I just, I don't want to say I don't trust that this group of people will all make it happen really fast. But, you know, things take longer than we think and people's priorities change and plans change. And I I just want it to be in there, so.
No, and Brad mentioned it as kind of a preamble, which is a less formalized, I would think is a less formal way of including it. Is that enough? Or do you want it to be more formalized than that?
I I don't have the document, so I don't know where it fits. Do you all have the document? I mean, we, we don't have it. We have a presentation about it, so I don't know where, if I had the draft to review, I would, I think I would have more suggestions around this. But I, at this point, I think we're trusting staff and our consulting team to take this input and put it in there somewhere where it's meaningful, but where it also won't require a lot of additional time and analysis.
Just two, two cents real quick. I, we don't have the document yet either. We're working on it. We've got an internal draft. It's not ready to share yet, even with, in our team. So in terms of the way you just characterized it, that's perfect, right? Between X and X location, we can do that. I just don't want to get into the business of figuring out exactly where that's going to sit and which property owners we got to work with. We just recognize the need between these two gaps in safe crossings. And that's where, that's where we recommend a short term.
And Todd, would that, would this part of this go into the, you know, it's in the body of the document, but also, you know, documenting from a stakeholder, you know, from a, just a, a community outreach standpoint, this, this meeting is, you know, a community meeting. And I would assume that we would also be captured there, this, this discussion be summarized there to a certain degree.
Sure, yeah, along with any support for the long range plan.
Councilmember Bregel, you have something to add?
I just, it seems now it's a little different, but it seemed like there was a lot of pushback about not wanting to add it from some of the partners. And I'm wondering, is it, is it problematic? I'm not understanding why, why we wouldn't want to add it unless it, unless it created a problem for us getting things done right away. I don't think it has to be detailed, but I do appreciate Councilmember Arroyo bringing that forward, that yes, in fact, we will be gone in two years and we would like to see this project move forward in the way that, and to capture the things that we've discussed.
So in the way that Councilmember Arroyo discussed, do either of our partners, you want to just give me a thumbs up like that works or make a comment if it doesn't work? All right.
I'll just say that that was our thinking all along, that we would have the short term projects or actions to 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 take on as soon as we, as soon as possible. So it wouldn't make sense to not include it.
Okay, so does everybody feel like this is enough information to move forward? Is this the direction you need? The plan, okay. All right, um, with that, I think that this item is over. Thank you. And we'll move on to our next item, which is board and commission vacancies. This is the time of year when a board member or commissioners are and committee members are asked then to choose to renew for another term or not. And the council approves, I make recommendations about people who apply. The council then ultimately approves them. And I just thought it would be important to kind of hear what those commissions and committees are and what we are asking of the folks who are volunteering to serve on them. I I think that maybe it's not always really clear what their role is. And that is one thing we will be working on together as a councils to clarify it. But right now, I just wanted to do an overview before we put a call out for other people to apply. So I do believe is that. So I do believe is that, uh, City Manager Satori.
Correct. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm going to give a very brief overview of all of the, uh, committees and commissions that we have that are, um, uh, created by ordinance and a brief explanation as to what they do. Um, all of these committees and commissions do have openings, um, that are coming up. It's first of the year, uh, we'll need to refill. Um, in alphabetical order, um, the first commission is the Arts and Culture Commission. It serves as an advisory capacity to council and staff on arts and culture. The Board of Appeals, um, is, uh, reviews construction codes and ordinances and hears, uh, appeals for, for, for building, uh, code decision. Um, the design review committee, um, reviews drawings and plans for development. Um, the Economic Development Commission, the commission, excuse me, analyzes economic development issues, and opportunities and provides advisory capacity to staff as well as council. Um, the Energy Committee, um, study, evaluate and make recommendations to council and to staff regarding energy efficiency and conservation. Uh, the Finance Advisory Committee, um, review our budget annually and advise council on the state of the city's finances. Uh, they also review our tax measure information and, and ensure and provide audits for that. Uh, the Historical Preservation Committee evaluate and review projects of properties that are listed on the historic register. Uh, the Housing Advisory Board was established back in nineteen seventy-six as part of our redevelopment, um, program back then and back then it was, uh, used to administer the Eureka Rental Assistance Program. Um, the Housing Authority of which we will have a more detailed report next council meeting by, uh, Chair Cheryl Churchill, the executive director, will come next week, but, uh, basically they direct and control construction and maintenance of low-income housing in the city. Um, while the mayor and the city appoints the members of the Housing Authority that are regulated by state and federal, um, guidelines, and, um, operate, um, based on that. Um, then we have the Open Space Parks and Recreation Commission. They make recommendations to council and staff, on matters related to open space, parks and recreation. Then we have the Personnel Board and, uh, they meet infrequently and as needed and they hear appeals related to personnel matters. And then we have the Planning Commission, which is the regulatory, um, commission, that holds hearings on planning and zoning matters and makes recommendations to council related to those matters. Then we have the Transportation and Safety Commission and they advise council and staff on matters related to transportation, safety, parking matters, and I'm sure the Broadway Multimodal Corridor Project at some point. Um, so with that, I, I, uh, staff wanted to kind of make some recommendations related to some of these, um, commissions and, and committees. Um, the staff that oversee the, um, Arts and Culture Commission as well as the Housing Advisory Board and the Economic Development, Commission, um, sees an opportunity to kind of consolidate those, um, commissions into one. Um, they, you know, especially recently, that since the strategic arts plan has been adopted, we've really been looking at, arts and culture is more of an economic development component. And, um, as far as the Housing Advisory Board staff that we see that is also, uh, as an economic development component. The board itself was established when redevelopment was around and there was funding for the Eureka Rental Assistance Program. That kind of program has kind of gone into our, um, kind of CDBG program that we have, first-time homebuyers. But the funding that was established this board as well as the funding that was used for the rental assistance program is no longer in existence. And we really see housing as, as more of an economic development, um, uh, component. So the, the idea from staff is to concentrate our efforts, concentrate, those housing-related issues as well as arts and culture and more in terms of economic development. And look at, um, combining those boards and having two representatives from arts and culture community, two representatives from, housing community and then three representatives from economic development with the chair being economic development, uh, person. The other recommendation from the staff that, um, oversee the Energy Commission is, um, staff has really seen there's a lot of redundancy with the advisory capacity of the, um, energy, the Eureka Energy Commission, um, the, um, Redwood Community Energy Authority. The city is a, is a member of that joint powers authority. They also had the city Citizen Advisory Commission. And, um, being able to concentrate and work and partner with the programs and the other, components of Redwood Community Energy Authority, um, staff feels that they can make those focuses and, and, focus on those projects that, that are with RCEA. As a matter of fact, over the last few months since, um, our non-regulatory boards and commissions have been out, um, because of COVID and pandemic and other staffing issues. Um, we've really had a lot of success with RCEA. We've, uh, established the, um, uh, battery backup system in some of our facilities through partnership with them and then also we're working on, PV and solar panels on multiple facilities within the city. Um, staff feels that concentrating efforts on that and using the, um, the, the advisory committee that's formed for RCEA is just as effective and frees up more time for our staff to concentrate on, those programs that, that, um, seem to be more available and also, uh, just see some efficiencies in doing that. So if there's any questions from council, um, I'm available.
Does anybody have, I, I also have a question about the Housing Advisory Board. Um, that is not overseen by, that's not really a city of Eureka. We just have people on it?
No, that is City of Eureka. It was through our redevelopment agency. There are people that are obviously not city staff that are on it, but yes, that is a city.
I, I must be con, there were two of them. Housing Authority, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Housing Authority is different from the one that was the redevelopment?
Yes. The Housing Authority as well as the Housing Advisory Board.
And then who is the staff that oversees the Housing Authority?
Uh, nobody does. They have their own staff, so they have an executive director. Um, we merely serve as an assignment for that Housing Authority. We don't provide staff on that. We partner with them and obviously consult with them, um, but we don't provide any staff for the Housing Authority.
Okay, that's, that was the one I was, I was trying to clarify. So it's not, we, we have our own committee that serves under the Housing Authority, which is not really a city of Eureka.
Yes. Yes, and they're, they're regulated by the state and then, and, um, they operate, obviously the Housing Authority properties that they oversee. Cheryl will be here next week to give a more detailed explanation as to what their function is.
So does anybody have any other questions or thoughts about some of these, um, some of the staff feedback? Some of it's really new to me, so. Um, another question would be if we do combine as the, uh, economic development staff would like, those three, um, committees, how, I, I shouldn't go around trying to, to s- people in it if we're going to.
But it'll take a timeframe currently. Right now, Assistant City Manager Powell is working on updates to this section of our code. And we would incorporate any changes, um, um, requested by council into those updates and then we bring them back to council for approval.
Um, okay, so anybody have any other questions about Councilmember Burgele?
Just real quick, so would that be changed by resolution or ordinance?
The ordinance would change.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Castellano?
Um, I'm pretty torn on this issue. Um, I understand the amount of time that, it takes for staff and, and that's a concern of mine, but also it seems like, um, I'm not sure. I, I guess I'm trying to imagine like how the, all these different things would be combined into one committee and how people would be chosen or not. It just seems like, um, kind of a, a big process, especially maybe given the fact that the, the commissions haven't met in a while. I mean, maybe that seems easier, but it also seems more difficult. Um, and, you know, because the people haven't even had the opportunity to engage, with the process on it. Um, but, I mean, I would support maybe like not filling empty positions on those committees. Um, you know, in order to give kind of time to, I guess. I mean, I, I see the argument that arts and culture is part of economic development. Um, but it, it's also sometimes not, you know. You know, one other question I have is like if they would meet every other month, you know, and kind of, uh, alternate months, if that would be, amenable, you know, would that kind of alleviate some of the burden of staff time or not?
So, well, right now during COVID, we, we, um, put a pause on the non-regulatory commissions and we're just starting that back up in November. So they'll start to meet again and as a tentative measure, we're having them meet every other month as opposed to monthly. Um, but we can, you know, take whatever direction wants the council in order to make this happen. As far as the makeup, um, a new economic development, each one of these commissions and committees have guidelines as to how, um, members are chosen and what backgrounds are preferred and how they pick. And so if we were to go with a makeup of two people with an arts and culture background, two people with housing background and three people with an economic development background, we would take those parameters that are existing in the, in the ordinance now and, and make it so, you know, two people will be chosen, based on the arts and culture, um, commission guidelines, two people will be chosen based on the Housing Advisory Board guidelines. Three people will be chosen for the economic development, uh, based on, yeah, based on the economic development guideline. Um, I think that, um, you know, arts and culture did have an advisory capacity at, at one point and through the advice of legal counsel, that's changed. And so that's kind of changed their makeup as it is currently. Um, we definitely, even though it may not be considered in, uh, an economic development, um, component, you know, whether it's quality of life, economic development, I think they fall under the same, um, framework. Um, but, you know, we can take direction of a council to choose to proceed.
So I do know that we, there are a lot of things that we were, we have, um, on different occasions have come up with commis- commissions as we get into our strategic visioning, which will be coming up soon. Um, this was one topic we were going to talk about. Um, I sort of like Councilmember Castellano's idea of just not filling any positions and then having a, you know, a, a discussion as we discuss all of, all of them together. Um, same with the Energy Commission. Does anybody have any thoughts about that one? Um, RCEA is, uh, serving the role currently and, uh, do we have a, what are some of the reasons we would want to keep, uh, the Energy Commission localized within the city? Councilmember Royal?
Well, I have thoughts on that, but a, a couple of other things as well. This is just, we don't need to, it looks like there's not members of the public waiting to speak. Um, I don't know if we do need to take public comment before.
That is true, huh?
There's some guy named Council Chambers here, but other than that, absolutely.
Well, I don't know if anyone planned to call in.
I know. We did not have anybody who had requested to speak on this item.
Okay, okay, then I feel comfortable launching into my thoughts on this. Um, I, I also like the idea of not filling some of the seats so we can kind of think more about this in our strategic planning session. I'd really like to empower the committees and commissions and boards to do more, to do more work if that's possible. Um, and if staff can, can accommodate, you know, helping them to do things like, you know, I'd love to have like a, an energy strategic plan. Um, you know, I, I'd be, they've made a case for their relevance and I think that it's absolutely true that the Energy Committee has, areas that they could focus on, especially as we look to guidance from the state to increase, um, you know, electrification within homes. And I know Councilmember Allison brought that forth as something he wanted to see us focus on, as far as policy within the city, um, and, you know, um, increase in electric vehicles and, you know, there, I think there are things that are Eureka-specific that RCEA, which is our regional joint powers authority, might not be as focused on. Um, so I'd be interested in seeing if they could, you know, if we are going to look at disbanding any of these boards and commissions, if they could be a part of a process for coming up with all of the ideas that they'd like to impart through a strategic plan or something like that. I don't necessarily just want to pull the plug, um, but I'd like to see and have more conversation about how we can give them more. I mean, ultimately we are the final vote, but I would like to give them more ability to recommend policies or have more, do more work that they bring to us, um, rather than just an annual report from each committee or commission or board. Um, I would love for it to really be like, feel like a grassroots thing where people want to serve the community. They get appointed. Um, then they work together to generate recommendations that we act on. A lot of times it feels like they're not, um, as, as much a part of that process as they could be. And so I'd love to see that be included more, but I, I think I need staff, staff input about what that would look like. Um, and I'd like to have more conversation about what, what council wants to see. And since we'll have a new council, bu- by the time we do our strategic planning, I think it'd be helpful to, to wait to fill the seats and have more of that conversation in depth. And to apprise our, uh, facilitators that we'd like to talk about it.
And there are some, but there are some, uh, committees and commissions that we want to make sure that we do have the seats filled as appropriate. One would be the Planning Commission. I believe the Historic Preservation Commission, Design Review. Um, which ones do you think we, we need to make sure we have filled? And their direction is clear. There's not a whole lot that we're going to be changing. And.
I would say the ones that, that, you know, staff hasn't recommended any changes to. I think that during the process of evaluating, how council wants to move forward, whatever that process is, that we could have discussions with those other boards that we're still filling, seats with and get inputs to them as to how they feel they could be more useful or whatever it may be. But as far as with Councilmember Arroyo, it's like, they, all of our commissions and committees do, um, provide recommendations. Um, some of those commissions and committees get frustrated with the fact that they're, not able to provide direction and that's definitely one area that we want to stay away from. Um, but we do want to make sure that all of them provide direction. I know that when I was the department head of community services, um, we took, I wouldn't say everything, but a very high majority of the things that went to council went to OSPR for discussion, especially as it relates, relates to open space, parks and recreation. And we always received recommendations from them. Um, so that's how they are supposed to, to work and if there needs to be some wording to change that. But one thing we don't want to, um, is to have, um, boards or commissions or committees, um, in this, in the thought process of directing staff.
Are, are we going to add the Chief's Advisory Board to this list or will that be different in some way?
I totally apologize and I forgot. As a matter of fact, it is official today. So that has already been added to the chapter and it is, uh, uh, within our, well, we, we, we made the changes and it's, it's adopted now and it will be incorporated into the same chapter. So yeah, the Chief's Advisory Board is a part of this.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm certainly happy to give feedback about the, well, it sounds like we don't have, names put forth yet, um, for those, those seats that need to be filled. Um, I certainly agree that the ones you mentioned, we should fill. Um, and I also would like to make sure we're speaking with, the chairs of the committees and so that they're not fully like taken by surprise about a change. And I, I, I'm not sure how, what I think about combining Housing Advisory Board, Arts and Culture. how, what I think about combining housing advisory board, arts and culture and economic development. I don't know if that's what people signed up for who are still going to be on there for a while. But I, you know, in looking at this, I, I was thinking about, sorry, this is kind of stream of consciousness, but I was thinking about the historic preservation commission and how I often hear concerns that maybe they're prioritizing like the historic integrity of structures, perhaps slightly more than creation of new housing, or that there's the perception that that's the case, whether or not that's really their intent. So I, I had this thought about combining housing advisory board and historic preservation, just because I think some of the members who have thought about housing through the lens of what the housing advisory board focuses on, might be able to add some perspective. And the qualifications for historic pres say, you know, includes like land use issues or other, other topics as deemed appropriate by the council. So, I mean, it's certainly rife with people who are very knowledgeable about historic preservation. But I don't think it would hurt to have one or two voices that are focused on kind of modernizing historic properties and adding housing.
Okay, so I know we're looking at strategic visioning to be coming up sometime during the beginning of the year. And so we should have a couple of, depending on when we start, at least one meeting with these non-regulatory commissions. We can direct staff to start having these preliminary discussions with their board and, and their chairs and get their input. I think we may be surprised as to some of them, how they react, so. We'll, we'll, but that forward to them and, and bring that back to council and as, where you can just get the information back from them and then bring that back to strategic visioning for council to make decisions.
I think that would be helpful to bring it back. Heidi, Heidi Messner, Councilmember Messner.
I'm just, I'm really glad we didn't do this last Tuesday night because we would have been at almost 1:30 in the morning by now. So I'm very happy that we decided to do a separate meeting for this. But when we're doing, I just wanted to clarify, when we're doing reports, I don't believe we have public comment on reports, do we? I thought that was just.
This is under reports and action items. And yes, there are public comment. On the city manager's report, there is not public comment.
So only on the city manager's report, we don't do public comment?
Yes, correct me if I'm wrong, Assistant City Manager.
I'm pretty sure it's under when we do reports, but there might be, if there's action items, then yes, but if it's reports, then it's not.
Well, I think that also I can, I can have comments if I want. And if somebody's, if we talk about something, and I'm probably not going to tell them I don't want them to talk about it.
You're right. Well, I don't think anyone's on right now, but so I was just clarifying if this was a report versus like an actual action item. It was more like a report that we're giving feedback, right? At this point?
Yeah.
But Assistant City Manager Powell, can you clarify? Is there's any difference between a report or action items under report and action items?
Usually if we have an item under action in reports, we do request that we clarify that there's a member of the public that wishes to speak, but we did do that on this item and I didn't have anybody who wished to speak. We were okay on that. I think that happened before Councilmember Arroyo spoke.
And so this is an, it's a weird conversation because it's large, but I just really wanted some direction about how we seek people for the positions. And it was really important that we had this discussion because now we know there are a few positions we don't want to look at until after we get those, get this a little bit more figured out. So then I would say that when we send out the press release seeking candidates, I would make sure to identify which ones we're seeking candidates for and leave out those that are kind of under discussion right now.
That's what I said declared, those would be the housing advisory board, the economic development commission, arts and culture commission and the energy commission. The rest of them that are out there, we would solicit.
Yeah. Councilmember Braga.
Are there going to be positions available on the police advisory?
We're going to have to go through that process in order to comply with the current chapter. Those people that are currently on the chief's advisory board will have to go through an application process and be recommended by the police chief and brought back to council. So that'll be coming back to you. At that point, we'll know whether or not, I'll have to check with the chief. There may be somebody who's up right now, but I'm not sure. But we'll have to go through that process with all of them.
And there was one point he told me there were a couple of seats open, I think.
Okay.
I do know that there's one that has been begging for a while.
So will, will that be added, pardon me, will that be added to the press release then? Can we add that or is that going to have to come at a later time?
We can. So Department Head will speak with the chief and, and see what, what the vacancy, what the vacancies are and, and solicit that if there's a need.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Then let's move, does he may have anything else to say or add to this? I'm looking forward to a longer conversation about all of them, but I'm happy to move on to the city manager report for now.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to provide a brief report on measure H and I'm sure there's a huge slew of the public waiting with bated breath to see this. So I'm going to share my screen. Can you guys see that?
Not, nope. Zoom height, Natalie.
Come on, Miles. Can you see that?
I see it on your screen in the background. That's so weird.
Really?
Yeah.
The reflection off your window. Yeah.
I just want to apologize that my, my internet wasn't working in my room very well. So I'm, I'm sitting beside the dog door. My dog doesn't know why I'm doing this. So that's special guest.
You happy you are?
Did that work?
That you're up.
Yes.
Ready to go.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Are you seeing it full screen? No.
Not full screen. I think you have to go up towards his slideshow.
I did put slideshow.
Actually, I don't see a cursor at all. It's like it's a stagnant thing.
Well, I apologize. We're going to go through this just in the consideration of time.
Alrighty.
Would you like your IT director to come assist?
That would probably be helpful, but I think we can get by with. Yeah. I'm telling you, I'm hitting the.
Miles, I can see that you're doing it right. I can see what you're doing, but.
Yeah. And it, it does me the think mode and then it doesn't do anything. Thank you, Councilmember Arroyo. I was about to lose it.
What is measure H, Miles? I'm dying to know.
So yes, measure H is a ballot measure that was approved unanimously by council. Back in November, I can't even get this to. There we go.
There you go.
Okay. Measure H is an extension of an amendment of measure Q, which was passed in 2014 at a 66% voter approval rate. Measure H was approved unanimously by council to be placed on the November 3 ballot. As we have learned, especially recently during the pandemic, small rural communities like ours cannot rely on state and federal funding. This measure will maintain and enhance locally controlled funding for biotable services. It is more important than ever to continue investing in and supporting our own local economy and unique needs. Continuing measure H will preserve local control over local needs for public safety, emergency response, roads and other vital services that keep our community a great place to live and raise a family and also help to attract and retain local jobs. As we have learned through recent community outreach and engagement, residents identified top priorities and the city should maintain if measure H funding was extended. You can see these top priorities were very well supported. All of them were well above 70% of support. A lot of them were strongly supported, you know, in the high seventies and all above, over 50%. And the top priority was repairing potholes and some of the conditions of our roads. And then the second was maintaining police and fire emergency services. So one of the, it's very clear that the community recognizes the need the city has for, for funding to maintain vital services. Measure H would go towards improving our streets. Without measure H, the region will not be able to would not be able to bring in additional state and federal matching funds for critical local improvements, which would make our roads and sidewalks safer for drivers and pedestrians, including first responders. We need to reach people quickly during an emergency. When you dial 911, obviously every second counts. The city's top priority is keeping our community safe. Continuing measure H maintains emergency response services and helps ensure our paramedics, firefighters and public safety officers continue to be ready to help when we need them the most. As our Humboldt Bay Fire Crew, quick to action. Measure H will continue to maintain social service programs recently developed by EPD and the community services. The uplift and CSET program will continue to connect community members experiencing homelessness with the appropriate services and programs, as well as provide much needed job skills training and employment program. We also will be able to transfer out of our private diversion, a private diversion program and alternative response programs into full service programs, reducing the impacts on the legal system and providing productive resolutions for some of our most disadvantaged community members. Measure H will also provide assurances of local control. Obviously during the pandemic, this has been very clear that this is something we need to maintain. As we've seen over the years, state and federal funding is not reliable. These vital services cannot be taken, furthermore, these funding cannot be taken by state or federal government agencies. So we can be able to maintain local services for public safety, road maintenance and those vital services that the community needs and wants. Measure H continues and amends measure Q at a one and a quarter cent rate. The tax does not apply to prescription medicine, groceries or property. As Finance Director Malard presented a couple of council members ago, a council meeting ago, nearly 50% of the funding that goes into our tax base and general fund comes from, out of, from visitors from outside of the region, not, non-Eureka residents. And as we have done with measure O and Q, the previous tax measures, measure H will have independent oversight by our finance advisory committee through annual audits, ensuring that the funds are spent on vital local services that the community has already identified as priorities. We will continue what we've done with O and Q with the finance advisory committee and also bringing them back to council on an annual basis during budget review. So if anybody is interested in getting more information, you can log on to our website. And you can also get more information on the election on our website as well. So with that, unless there's any comments or questions by council, I would recommend that we convene.
You'll recommend what?
That we end the meeting.
Well, we still have council reports.
Oh, I apologize.
But does anybody have anything to say about this item here? And if not, we'll move on to council reports. Okay, so we will start with Councilmember Messner.
Thank you. So just a couple of things, there, the League of California Cities Annual Conference was just before our previous meeting. And that this is the extension of. And so there was a number of things that occurred during that meeting, but the coastal cities leadership team, I'm part of that. So I would, I would hope that someone would be, would step up to be a part of that in the future, since I will be finishing my term. And the, let's see. Also wanted to mention that St. Joe's 100th anniversary virtual event is on November 1st. And there's also on, on the 31st, a number of events that the city has put, has posted at local parks and at the zoo. So if people want to be involved in that, check the website. I guess that's the easiest way to say that. And the St. Joe's event, you can find on their Facebook page. Also, thank you very much for all of those who donated to the fire, to the, our local firefighters that were fighting the fires up at Ruth. We had so many, it was usually anywhere from two to four loads a week that were going up there. And that was like a full truck or van load. So it was, it was a lot and there were two locations that were collecting. So thank you very much to all of those, all of you who donated to that in both Eureka, at Case Center and also with Street Chapel and Fortuna. And with that, I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Arroyo.
I don't have anything to report. There are meetings that continue to happen, but they're all published elsewhere. So I will, there's nothing that I specifically need to bring up right now.
Alrighty. Councilmember Castellano.
Let's see. I have been, yep, attending meetings that are also published elsewhere. One of the, one of the unpublished meetings, there was a broadband working group, which I am, sorry, my dog. But the, the, I'm really distracted now, but the broadband working group. Anyway, that, that group is working to bring something before council along with the, or, you know, to host kind of a special meeting with the planning commission and economic development commission. So that will hopefully come up in the next month or two. The other thing I've been working on is her, her ball's stuck someplace and she wants me to get it. But the other thing I've been working on that I did want to bring to council was I've been meeting with a group of kind of a, a few different citizen groups that have come together along with EPD to kind of do a deep dive into the idea of, well, it started off looking at the need for more shelter opportunities for people and specifically around looking at the possibility for a tiny, some sort of tiny house pilot project. So I wanted to get council's opinion on whether there was enough interest with this for staff to continue meeting on this. And let me just give a quick list of the things that have come up in the meeting. meeting on this. And let me just give a quick list of the things that have come up in the meeting. So that way you kind of know what you might be supporting or not. And again, you know, this is just very tentative. So the pilot project would be an initial project that would last four to six months, but could be continued if successful. Or we would look at continuing if successful. There would be clear measures that would be established for success. There'd be no more than 20 people, ideally some number around 15. There would be partnerships with Uplift and other community organizations and agencies that would be developed to provide services and help monitor the site. COVID precautions would be in place. There would be a fair and transparent application process. And the site would be fenced with clear entrances and exits. The other thing, you know, there would be community outreach and I've I've made some preliminary conversations with people who are kind of experts in community outreach to, you know, build support around that in the community. But and then also, one of the people who's been part of this is Greg Gier in the NCIDC and they do have some funding, they got some special funding to support services needed because of the pandemic that could be used to fund staffing and potentially, and especially people who have been, who have lost work and or who are houseless. You know, who are more severely affected because of the pandemic to help fund it. So those are just kinds of, sorry, went on and on. Those are the the ideas we've been working around. You know, and and I want to say that EPD and Miles, the city manager, have been really great at showing up to these meetings. But I didn't know if council would support kind of developing the idea further to bring back to council.
So I, for a question, because this isn't something, just it sounds like it's bigger than just a like, should we write a letter? Yeah, that sounds good kind of thing. Would, are you asking us to bring it to an agenda in the future?
Well, I I think may maybe that's what I'm asking, Miles, I don't know, or City Manager Slattery, I'm not sure, like you know, I wanted to see if council was at all supportive of a tiny house project. Coming before, would would that make the most sense in terms of next steps?
Information at a future meeting, but I don't think we can decide even whether to continue like allocating staff resources, like because that
That's a big
That has to be agendized, yeah.
Yeah, but I'd like to get more information about it and it sounds like a really cool project, so I would be super into getting it on a future agenda.
Okay, great.
That could be, that could be a report by you or that could be a report by some other member of the group that we've been meeting with and come back with some preliminary ideas.
Okay, super, thanks. Sorry, yeah, I wasn't sure what the best approach would be, so I appreciate the feedback.
Figured it out together. I'm figuring out stuff all the time. And was that the end of your report?
That's the end.
Councilmember Braga.
Can't unmute.
You're done. Oh, did it again?
Is it late? I don't know. So I just have two things. The first thing is, don't forget to vote. Please vote, vote. November 3rd, your voice is important. You need to vote. Doesn't matter how you vote, just vote. It's important. And then secondly, so I've been really just trying to keep up on my council page. It's Kim Braga for Eureka City Council. And I've been really looking at what's been happening in the community and really trying to post that. So if you're looking for ideas of things to do, that's another opportunity for you to find things. I don't usually comment about a bunch, but I do try and share a lot of things that are happening, so there's stuff about Halloween on there. Councilmember Messner mentioned it, but certainly if you need times and events, those kinds of things, check it out. Thank you. Don't forget to vote.
And I would just like to close with two closing thoughts. One is, as well as the things that Councilmember Messner mentioned, there are a couple of activities happening in Old Old Town this weekend that are Halloween based, so I would look at Eureka Main Streets page. There's a drive up treat sharing thing. So it's not, it's not the old walking around town in your costumes, but look it up on Main Street. The other thing is, after you vote, just try to let the process happen after that. It's going to be, I've talked to so many people, it's a very stressful time. So if you have to turn off the news and you have to turn off social networking and you have to just go play a game with your family and not pay attention to the election for a while, that is okay, as long as you voted first. And with that, I will close. Thank you very much.
All right, bye.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
Bye.